Can we do a test to see if you can hear me and I can hear you?
Supervisor Campbell, can you hear the room?
I can now, yes.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Everybody.
Going to be here.
Everybody looks very dapper there.
Thank you. Thank you Supervisor Campbell.
There seems to be a glare coming from the bottom area of the camera. Oh, hi Renee, how are you? Sorry.
Morning, sir.
Are we ready? Let's call this meeting to order. Like to welcome everyone today. We've got a few more folks here today than we normally do. And I'd like to very kindly ask you to please mute or turn off your cell phones, please. And we will begin by asking Supervisor Warren to lead us to the pledge.
Ladies and gentlemen, to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Thank you Supervisor, thank you. We'll move into our next item of business, Call to the Public. Step forth and state your name, please.
My name is Will Collins. I live here in Clifton. And I'm going to be brief. I just have a couple of comments and one request. First comment is that I'm a volunteer with the Greenlee Tourism Association. And we, we have a number of activities that support community building and bringing folks into Greenlee County and supporting activities that support businesses in Greenlee County. My request is that the Board of Supervisors consider adding the website visit greenlee county dot com, which is our Tourism Council website. As a link to the Greenlee County website. And also that the Board of Supervisors consider ongoing financial support for the Greenlee County Tourism Association. My final comment is that we really appreciate the past support that you've given the Tourism Association. And have a lot of gratitude for that. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak here today.
Well, thank you.
Could you state your name again? We missed it first.
Will Collins.
Collins, thank you.
You're welcome.
Derek, you'll, we'll look into those requests. Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Will. Okay, shall we have the Sheriff? Come on, come on up next, please.
Chairman, Ward, I just wanted to come here today just to honor a couple of people that are in our community, Deputy Moneros and Lieutenant Aguilar. On January 3rd, they did a very courageous thing, something I haven't done in my entire career. And it took a lot of courage and I, you know, they delivered, they helped deliver a baby in a front yard in a residence in Morenci. This is something that's a very rare thing to happen and I think that we should honor them and what they did. They're heroes. They're Greenlee County heroes. And I just want to recognize them for their efforts. And if I could present to them this award in front of the board, that would be appreciated.
Absolutely.
Very much so.
Jason, starting, come on up. Omar, you want to come in?
This is our award. It's for presented to Jason Moneros. It's for above and beyond service, Call of Duty, and it's a boy. Same thing, Shari. This is for Shari Aguilar, boy. These officers were incredible in their efforts and their service. Thank you much.
It's my honor to tag you with this.
This is for Officer Aguilar.
Congratulations. You guys are heroes. There's nothing better than a blessing from the little baby.
Will, David, if you guys just stand up there.
Congratulations, well deserved.
All right. Who else do we have on Call to the Public? Go ahead and see.
What a hard act to follow.
Oh, God.
Good morning Supervisors. He, yes. Honored guest. I'm Steve Ammon, local, near Dwell, troublemaker and otherwise, trying to help Greenlee County survive into perpetuity. I had some good news because a year ago, you guys were kind enough to help us, and I'm speaking for the Greenlee County Tourism Association, to move the San Francisco River Revitalization Project along. And we've had a real tough time trying to find adequate individuals to come and help us do just that. As you recall, our, our, our goal was to further the Clifton General Plan. And that is to establish the San Francisco River as an ecotourism destination. And then in working with local citizens, Will has been very instrumental in helping me along the way on that. We've talked to hundreds of local citizens and gotten their input, documented it. The number one issue has been finding access to the river, finding fishing, ways to utilize the river in positive ways. And I'm thrilled to be able to announce that we have reached an agreement with the Hila Watershed Partnership. And they are going to work in concert with natural channel design out of Flagstaff. And begin to develop what we've all been looking for, a system of trails, find access, provide what we need to move the project forward. And so I just wanted to come back to you and let you know that your patience has paid off. We're looking forward to getting the, the total scope of work itemized and everything. But they are ready to get going and we will be starting this very soon. And if I can answer any questions, I would be happy to attempt it. Although I'm just new back in town. I escaped for a while to get a little break. Anyway, thank you so much.
Offer questions.
Yeah, but thank you.
Thank you. Oh, that's right. Stupid me. This is called the public. What am I thinking? I'll get on the agenda and we'll let you know exactly what's going on. Thank you so much for your support.
But thank you very much for that update. Thank you, Stephen. Okay, so one, anyone else on Call to the Public out there? Okay, here now.
Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead, Ron.
I just, I just wanted to sincerely apologize not being there in person. I would love to, love to be there sitting by you guys in a, in a blessed, you know, small community like ours. We all wear many hats and right now I'm honored to be in, in DC representing Greenlee County on the, on the Substance Abuse Coalition. And attending that and we're visiting Capitol Hill and, and going to get the message of, of the Coalition Council to our representatives. And so anyway, I just wanted to apologize for not being there, but I'm there in spirit.
You're on, no apology needed. Thank you. Good work. Okay, we'll move into our next item of business. Public Health Service District. Board of Supervisors will convene as the Board of Supervisors, Directors of the Greenlee County Public Health Service District and will reconvene as the Board of Supervisors following the consideration of the following item, Consent Agenda. I asked for motion.
I saw a move that we approved that consent agenda is listed.
I second that motion.
Motion has been made and second, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, ayes have its own order. We will now reconvene as the Board of Supervisors and we'll move into our next item of business, Flood Control District. The Board of Supervisors will convene as the Board of Directors of the Greenlee County Flood Control District and will reconvene as the Board of Supervisors following the consideration of this item, also the consent agenda.
I saw a move that we approved the consent agenda is listed.
I second that motion.
Motion has been made and second, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Ayes have its own order. Right, we will reconvene as the Board of Supervisors and move into our next item of business. Beta Phelps, Executive Director, Southeastern Arizona at Work. Florence, your Beta.
Good morning. It's a great pleasure to be here in front of you today. I have with me a Marina who is our office person. And she also serves as our business outreach person for the county. So if anything you want to know about what's going on in Greenlee County with workforce, she's your lady. I also have with me Mr. Ron Curtis, who is President of our Board, and he's going to speak as soon as I get through. I'm going to be very fast. And about what the Board does. So I presented the annual report. I just want to point it out, point out a couple of things. The on page seven is our allocations from Department of Labor. That comes through the Department of Labor to the state and then to us. And you can see that last year we lost 235,000. This year, we're going to lose almost 500,000. The formula with which they disperse the money is based two thirds on our unemployment rate. The good news is our employment rate is low. The bad news for us is the employment rate is low. So I just wanted to point out, but when I first, when we first took over Greenlee County and Graham County, Hay Gale was very specific about she didn't want us to leave. And she did everything in her power. She helped us move. She, she let us use county trucks, what the county employees to drive them to move and everything. She was very, very helpful and that's why we're here. And Chairman Gomez helped us find an office. Although Dr. Goodman now wants the office we currently have, which is at the east end of his building. And he wants us to move to the west end of his building because he needs more space for his business. So it's we're talking about it today. We haven't decided yet, but we'd be in the same building. So there's, there's a lot of information in the, in the, in the year end report. If you look at page eight, this is our performance measures. The Department of Labor sets which your performance measures are. We negotiate the levels of how much of each of the factors we're going to try to make. And our Board President, he always sits on negotiations and he said, where's the negotiation? They tell you that's what you're going to do. Anyway. He's, he's very firm about that and we appreciate it. The, the good news and the bad news is that there's copies of who are, who sits on our board. And there's copies of our budget and there's copies of what our board meetings are. And we welcome you to come anytime that you want to a board meeting. We would very much honor you if you come to the board meeting. The financial statements is it's so late in the year that I have come here is that we got, so we have last year's with annual, but financial statements. And we also have this year's, which is not in the packet, but you should receive to copy. This is our audit from our independent auditors. And if you're like me, when I sit on boards and commissions, I go to the very last page. And I want to know if I'm in trouble of being a board member. So if you look at that last page, they identified no material weaknesses. There was no non-compliant materials. And down toward the bottom, we're considered a low risk auditee, which I like to see. So are there any questions on the board annual report? And there's a lot of stories in there about our clients. Because you get to see the budgets, you get to see the audits, you get to see the, the annual report, but you don't get to see people. And that's one thing I know Ron wants to talk about with you all. So Ron, would you like to talk about the board?
No, Beta, I don't, I don't have any questions or concerns. I just want to make a comment on a, congratulate you on a job well done again. Every time you come here, you come with good news and I don't think you've ever come with anything where, where there's that there's attention on, on the audit that, that was performed on your, on your business. So thank you very much.
Well, well, thank you. I don't do it by myself. I have a great staff.
I, I.
A great staff and a great board. Okay, Ron?
I'll just, I'll just take a, a quick moment. I've been a volunteer unpaid for 25 years or so on the board and been chairman for a long time. I was there when they merged the three counties together, which was a little bit tenuous at, at the beginning. What we found though is great, great support. What we want, our, our board has to be 51% private sector. So it can't be any kind of government employee, not schools, not whatever. And so that's always been a challenge, but I've really insisted that we be balanced among our three counties. So we really want representation on our board from people that you may want on. So we are open at any time for any suggestion, any recommendation. Again, we have also, we're kind of the maverick of Arizona. We don't wait for them to tell us what we can do. We sit around with our people in our communities and say, what can we do? What needs to be done? And so we're open to looking at just anything, whether it's training programs, whether it's meeting with schools, young kids, displaced people, we go into the prisons, we go everywhere just to find out what is, what's the need and how can we upscale our area so that the economic life of, of this area is more vi, more vibrant. So that's our goal. We're at your service, whatever you would like. Just please let us know. But thank you. It's been my privilege, privilege to, to serve for these different years. And it, it's one of those things where Beta gets you by the ankle, puts the chain on and, and you don't even realize the time's passing by. So. So I, I very much appreciate the staff, the work they do and what the local people bring up and look to solve problems. So, so thank you.
Can I ask a quick question?
Sure.
Do you have openings on your board now as we speak or?
We, we do. Yes, yes.
So if there were some individuals that were interested, then we could refer them to you?
Absolutely, absolutely. Thank you. Yeah, no, we, we have, we have, we have a couple of people from this area, but we certainly want to keep that balance. We don't want it overshadowed by Cochise or by Graham. We want to work together very, very well. So we, we, we do want that representation.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Ron.
Mr. Chairman, I had a question for Ron.
Go ahead.
Sorry, I'm not there, but you know, you mentioned about getting into the schools and helping the youth. Is there opportunities for, for you guys to go into the schools to help maybe with resume writing and that type of thing? You know, we offer some classes, you know, in kind of life skills. And I think that that might be a really great segment of introducing them to getting their resumes. resume in order, you know, for graduating seniors to, to start to venture out into that real world.
A- absolutely. We love working with young people. We found even when they're starting to the career before they're even into the resume writing introduction. It's no secret to anybody from Greenlee County that mining isn't what it used to be, but a lot of times kids don't understand what careers are, what's available, what their potential is, how they can help get there, how they can be, help finance all those things. But resume writing and different pros and likes like that, we've been invited to many schools to be able to assist and we're glad to do that at any time. Usually we call on a lot of the business owners to come in and help and give presentations as well on how to do those things. We've, we've even done different programs where we, where we interview. They, they make up a mock job and we, we interview and they have that interviewing experience, which it's kind of scary for them and kind of really fun for us, but, but it, it gives them exposure and so they start looking ahead. But yes, we're glad to do that.
Okay, I'll, I'll, I'll be in contact and, and maybe get you in contact with uh somebody at the school and, and uh and maybe we can introduce, you know, some of those life lessons uh to those students and at least get them started into looking into the future of, you know, the, the working class. That's what's going to happen with a lot of them. So, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Just say your words.
Sure, absolutely.
Hi.
Thank you, Ron.
Um, my name's Mardina Morales. I'm the Business Service Representative and also the Resource Aid for the Arizona Network Office in Clifton. Um, I retired from Clifton Police Department as a dispatcher. I put in fifteen years there and then I decided to go to Arizona at Work. Um, it's totally different atmosphere, but I love my job. I love Beta. I love Vicky. Uh, she's the director underneath Beta. Um, as Mr. Campbell had said about going into the schools, me and uh Vicky were there actually October twenty-third, which is my birthday. We were there with uh Ms. Baker and we did a life skills, um, kind of like a mock interview. We did resumes and I did actually have about eight seniors uh bring me their resumes for me to actually um format them, put them together and present them to them and they were wowed. They've, they were really impressed with, you know, what an actual resume should look like. Um, I've done, I was supposed to do one in Duncan, but the timing, just my husband works shift work for FMI, so it, I also have um a little one that's in third grade, so I have to, my schedule just didn't work out for that event. But uh we're also going to um Laura Durrell's uh the science and health fair next in two weeks, so we'll be there as well. Um, handing out information as far as resumes, um, some jobs that we have available. In our office, we do have a wall that does have a job board and it has jobs from Morenci, Clifton. There's even some positions in your, in this building that are up on there. Um, I speak with Carolyn Dino very closely, trying to help her fill positions when um she does have them available. I work with FMI and some of the subcontractors should I, to try to get those positions filled. I help the school. I, I try to go everywhere between here, Clifton and Duncan.
Great. Well, well, Ron, uh Mrs. Morales is one step ahead of you.
Sorry, Mr. Campbell.
No, that's great.
Yeah, it is.
But if you could get us in there more, that would, we would really appreciate it.
Yeah.
That would be great.
You know, you let me know if you have any issue at all.
Oh, thank you.
And I'm sure you're going to be hearing from Mr. Wern over here too.
Absolutely.
And that'd be great.
Yes, that's great.
Thank you for all you do.
Thank you.
Hey, good stuff. All right. We will move into our next item of business. Tony Hines, Public Works Fleet Facilities Manager. Floor is yours, Tony.
Morning, Tony Hines, Fleet Manager. I was contacted a couple of weeks ago by Mr. Bruce Tingle. He operates Tingle Auctions out of Wilcox. He comes and does an auction up here in Safford for all the entities, Safford, Pima, Thatcher, Graham County, Greenlee County, Duncan, that uh Clifton. Uh, stuff like that. So he's going to have an auction here in March fifteenth. Um, these are the ten vehicles that I've identified that need to go away quick. And we probably have some stuff in our laydown yards that we could probably add to that, some old stuff that we need to get rid of. Haven't listed those, but uh Mr. Van Neese and I will go through that and identify those things and get them hauled over there and see if we can get rid of those also.
Okay. Good. Anybody have any questions with Tony before we let him go? Nope. Okay, thank you, Tony. Appreciate it.
Thank you, sir.
All right, we'll move into our next item of business.
Mister Chairman.
Yes.
Do, do we need to make a motion to approve that list?
Oh, I'm sorry, we do. Sorry.
Well, I moved that we approve, I approve, I moved that we approve of the list uh um regarding the vehicles that are listed for auction as presented.
I second Mr. Campbell's motion.
Motion has been made and second, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Ayes have it so ordered. Thank you, Ron. Okay, item number six. Eric Ellison, County Sheriff. Floor is yours.
Thank you, uh Chairman, Board, Eric Ellison, Sheriff. I just want to discuss buying new uh laptop computers for the deputies and their patrol cars. It's an essential service that we, we do our work every day and it's being, it's being compromised by the, the lack of our computers that they're, I mean, there's some rough shape. As soon as you unplug them, they go dead. Batteries are shot, the, the keyboards, the back zone are broken. Anyways, uh, we do have the money in our, in our budget. We have a, our impound fee funds that we've had and they've been saved up for a while and we've had the money there. We're going to use some other sources of our money, monies to pay for these things, so it won't uh, we're not asking for any money. We're just asking that we can purchase these computers. Um, I think we have an agreeance with uh, with Austin and also our IT, IT department and they all know that these computers, they're just shot. We, we, these guys really need them for their job properly. And so that's what we're asking is to be able to purchase these computers.
Okay. Anybody have any questions?
Mister President, uh, how many computers are there?
We're ordering seventeen computers, I believe. Is that correct? Seventeen.
And you do hold, have that in your budget, correct?
We do.
Mister Chairman, um, I wanted to commend the sheriff for looking for different options. There, there's a type of computer that's widely used in law enforcement, a tough book type thing. You're supposed to be able to run on with tanks and all kinds like that. But uh, correct, the sheriff, working with bits, they found an option that is likewise built for rough use. Um, but at a, a much smaller cost per unit. Uh, and since these are mounted in the car and there's some normal road jiggle, but, but we're not running over them with tanks. And so I really appreciate them looking at, at effective but cost-effective options. So I wanted to point that out.
Okay. Thanks, Derek.
Right, thank you.
Okay. Uh, entertain for motion.
Mister President, I would like to move that we approve the uh procurement of a new squad car computers for the sheriff's office.
I'll second that. In the amount, uh, do, do we need to add to the, in the amount not to exceed fifty thousand dollars?
That would be best.
So moved or so, so amended or go ahead.
So I'd like to add to that move to, to make sure it does not uh surpass the amount of fifty thousand dollars.
I'll second that.
Motion has been made and second, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Ayes have it so ordered. Thank you, Sheriff. Okay, we'll move into our next item of business. Derek Repeer, County Administrator. Floor is yours.
Thank you. I, I first need to apologize to the, the charitable organizations that want that we donate too regularly and to bring uh Supervisor Warren up to speed. There are uh, I believe three or maybe four uh donations we make annually. And, and they have a direct impact that affects our overall budget. So uh, there are vulnerable populations that if we don't support in some way, we end up um being billed for other things like long-term care and so forth. So some of these programs are aimed at keeping, for example, seniors in their homes. Uh, meals on wheels, other home care type services that, that we fund that in the end um get much more bang for their buck because these, these folks are able to stay in home with their families as opposed to care facility someplace. Um, the other is uh, that includes the podiatry and so forth. So the first part of this is uh asking the board to approve the distribution of already budgeted monies to these uh charitable organizations that provide services to our citizens. Um, indeed, uh, one is, is uh, we support the food bank, which is a highly effective operation. Um, they coordinate uh commodities distribution and other things. But we uh, this contribution helps them keep their operational flow, again, serving some of our most vulnerable citizens. So as for uh, item A, those are budgeted funds that we've already looked at. And, and I simply have not gotten to it. Uh, Laura, uh, it goes to Garcia in our office and I worked out a schedule to bring this and get this done earlier in the budget year, but we'd asked the board to approve the distribution of those funds.
Okay, does anybody have any questions or concerns?
So section A, uh, Mr. Repeer is, has already been budgeted in years past.
Correct. That, that's been ongoing appropriation for many, many years.
Ron, you have anything?
Uh, no, I don't.
Okay, well, I entertain for motion.
Go ahead, Will.
I'd like to make the motion that we um approve authorizing payment for the budgeted donations for charitable organizations to assist that elderly and elderly and other, other groups in need.
I'll second that.
Motion has been made and second, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Ayes have it so ordered. Okay, we'll move it to item B.
Item B is uh, a request. The Mount Graham Safe House is an organization that serves both Grand and Greenlee Counties. Um, they've had an established safe house in, in the Grand County area for a couple of decades. Um, they perform a service that is so unique, no one else really provides it. And they, they serve uh the community of victims that are the, the victims of domestic violence from a, a partner, spouse, in some cases, parents and so forth. So um, for many years, they had a satellite office, if you will, that was co-located at the Morenci Clinic. Um, with the renovations that took place up there, they were displaced from that area. Um, instead of been working, uh, gathering donations, trying to find a location, they have located a place. Uh, it is just off um the highway behind the outpost in the Duncan area. And they are busy trying to uh get that ready to, to set a mobile unit on. Well, it's a manufactured home, if you will, to provide those same services. Obviously, our volume in Greenlee County is less than in Graham County. But they coordinate all kinds of services for uh usually women, um, often women with families. Um, to help them find services, help them find employment, anything they can to help get these uh victims on their feet independently. They've asked that we assist with some of their infrastructure. Um, for example, they would like to build a, a uh cement or a brick wall, if you will, um, around the outskirts that, that allows for an extra layer of separation between public and those who may be staying there. Privacy is a big concern. Um, and so they had uh requested that we assist in the, the amount as presented there. While this was not specifically budgeted, we do have capacity in our general services fund to fund this request. Um, we received another request earlier on in the year as well from uh the Duncan Library. We've put them in touch and we'll do what we can to help them uh make a, a request through the United Way. I believe the Domestic Violence Group has also worked with United Way. So this is a request uh to help build some of that protective infrastructure. Staff recommends that we do it. Like I said, we, we have a budget. We just didn't specifically budget this particular donation. This is not the ongoing nature like the ones we just approved.
Mister Chairman, I had a question.
Go ahead, Mr. Campbell.
Um, Derek, um, I know that the original ask was for, you know, that their estimate was ten thousand, you know, for this block wall. Um, but just the materials came in at thirteen thousand. What is the ask? Just for us to help assist with the purchase of the materials?
The ask was for a specific amount for that particular part of the project. I don't know that it was necessarily tied to the specific full cost. Um, certainly the board is not bound. I mean, if you felt like uh, you know, ten, thirteen thousand be more appropriate, we have that capacity as well. But as I recall, the request was not necessarily a dollar for dollar, brick for brick um request. It was a set amount. They, they um work with many other donors to try and achieve their goals as well. But, but the board is certainly at liberty to uh fund beyond their request.
Any other?
I just, just, just my opinion. Um, no, I, I think, I think, you know, obviously it's a, it's a necessary organization and unfortunately necessary organization, but but uh, uh, one that, that really provides an important service for, for those going through those um hard times. I mean, sometimes, you know, with families and kids and everything else. And so um, uh, my I would like to be able to say that we, that we were able to cover the cost of the materials um in the amount of thirteen thousand, two hundred and seven dollars and ninety-six cents. That would be my opinion and that's the way that I would word the motion, but I just wanted to throw that out there.
And it, and it could be less, but not more. Is, is that correct?
Correct, correct. I would, I would not to exceed that amount that they had gotten from ACE. Um, you know, for the materials. And I just think that that would be a, a, a good faith on our part um to, to assist them.
And, and Derek, is, is there a date at all on when that uh
I, I don't recall.
modular building will be there?
I, I, no, I, I know we've talked about it. I've seen some activity out there, but I, I don't have a, a specific date.
Okay. All right. Any other questions or concerns? Aaron, none, I entertain for motion.
Well, I, I move, I move the um, that we uh make the donation to the Mount Grand, Mount Graham Safe House uh as requested, the, in the amount not to exceed um thirteen thousand, two hundred and seven dollars and ninety-six cents to assist with their block wall fabrication for the Greenlee County uh facility.
I second that motion of Mr. Campbell.
Motion has been made and second, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Ayes have it so ordered. Thank you, gents. Okay, uh, our next item of business is Austin Adams, Deputy County Administrator.
Good morning. Thank you. Let me get a presentation up. Yeah, if you would. It's a short presentation, so. So, so to introduce this, this is a mid-year position changes. So as we'll go through this, we'll go over several pieces, but these are things that happen outside of the budget cycle. Um, and then again, this is kind of going over what those processes look like, those impacts and then um, you know, potentially looking at what directions to take. So the types of changes, these could be title changes. This could be um additional positions, additional pay, uh reductions in positions, reductions in pay. So um, all kinds of different pieces. This could be a, a simple as a title change from a coordinator to a, a a liaison, right? It could be very simple. Um, they could also be things where we're looking to move pay grades. Um, again, reductions in positions, sometimes this may have different implications. It could be uh, somebody leaves and they decide they want to hire it in as a part-time instead of a full-time. Um, so there's lots of different reasons. These are just kind of a, an overview of the different types of changes. And then the budget impacts. Um, so with this, um, there's different types of budget impacts that the positive budget impacts. Those would be things that give us a surplus in the budget. That could be again, a full-time position, drop down to a part-time position. Um, that could be a, you know, maybe it's a higher position that's dropped to a lower position. Um, so anything that's creating budget savings, um, reductions in head counts, reduced wage, um, any of those things that, that give us a, a budget positive. Um, and then negative, those would be going over the allotted, allotted budget. That would mean giving a raise when we didn't budget for one. Um, that would be a higher position that was unbudgeted for. Um, you know, there's lots of ways that could happen. Then increased wage typically wage or head count is what gets us there or, or title changes that are higher paid positions. Um, and then neutral, excuse me. This could be um, a title change that doesn't result in any pay increase. It's the same pay grade. They've just changed the title on it. Um, those types of things are probably more, most frequent um, when we think about neutral. Any questions on that, on how that impacts the budget? So in the history, uh, at least since I've been here, right? And that hasn't been a long time, but, but in the time I've been here, um, majority of these were all handled during the budget process, right? Um, Um, there was a few rare cases when they were handled handled out of the budget process. Um, and majority of the time, even with those, upon my recollection, those were all directed to in the future, go to the budget process. Um, again, that is what the history's been of the board. Again, these are your guys' direction uh in the past. So so in the future, going forward, again, this goes and titled it as timing, but but really is, there's there's several different ways the board can go about handling these, you know, mid-year requests. Again, it could go back to planning during the budget time. Um, it could be, again, and these are just some I put up there. By no means are these the absolutes. Um, uh, again, you know, if it's neutral or positive anytime, if it's positive anytime, um, again, these are looking for your guys decide to say what makes most sense. One of the things I will say when we're talking about budgeting and and I and I do believe that when we in the past have referred to during it during doing it during the budget year, and what I mean by this is there's a lot of times we have planning budgets starting in in March. Um, and and again, if we're if we're spending our time to budget and take our time to thoroughly budget, there's times we bake in some of these mid-year moves um starting in March that may happen in December if certain levels are made, right? You've seen this with some of the uh chief deputies. Um, I think we've seen this with the recorder. We've seen this with the clerk of the courts. So there is times that that during budgets season, we will budget for mid-year, understanding that that if expectations are met, we will make changes mid-year. Um, that has been something we've done in the past. So so one of the pieces with that um that budget planning piece, um, when we do it at that year end, it really makes us do a thorough look over the year, which is very nice. So um but again, lots of different options on this. Um, I just wanted, again, to kind of get this in front of you guys um to see what direction would make more sense for the board. You guys have any questions on this?
Any questions or concerns? Will, Ron? Uh, the only thing I have to say is a comment that when I saw it on the agenda, I said good, good for Austin to get this thing out in the open now and not right in the middle of the budget. Yeah, you know, so that's a good step, good step forward. Get a handle on it.
We're just looking for some direction from the board. Like I said, we've we've had situations come up like this. Usually they involve some sort of a a negative impact to the budget, even if negligible.
Yeah.
Um, but a- and and there may be circumstances. You know, I I could think, for example, e- election irregularities where maybe hiring somebody off budget may make sense. Um, but there are a lot of other movements, as as Austin pointed out, that occurred during the course of a fiscal year. Um, and so we're a little bit in limbo, given our our previous directives from the board, how you'd like us to handle these or bring them up tiny, frankly. Um, we can always bring them to the board whenever you you wish. Most of them will require board action. Okay.
This was all informational, so.
Give us direction now, or if you'd like to put on a future agenda, we can do that too. We we just like to, as we interact with the different departments and elected officials, be consistent in our approach.
No, I take the bull by the horns and started start going with it. Let's do it.
How do we do it presently right now? I I think you covered that.
Yeah, right now, we're most of those are being referred to the to the budget, right? Based on previous direction is wait till the budget time and we'll run them during budget. Again, that typically starts sometime in March. We'll start running over those.
And then adopted with the budget in July, final budget in August. So that might be, for example, we take a uh a leadership position, split it into to two lesser leadership positions, which may result in an overall budget savings. Uh, we've typically built that into our budget discussions, even though there's a a net positive gain to the budget. But it might also be the creation of a of a part-time or something else. Uh, like I say, if the circumstances warrant it, we would bring that to you. But but typically, if there's not an emergency aspect to it, we wait for the budget process to build it into the next year's budget. Title changes, um those are are very case-specific, if you will. Um, sometimes it's it's uh looking at rearranging duties and sometimes it's simple to try and put a name on on a position that that uh might be more appropriate. There's a there's a whole host of them. It it for us is the timing and and our past practice over the last several years in particular has been that we move those to the budget development process. But if you'd like to do it differently, we certainly can.
My my input is I'd like to have the opportunity, if it is an emergency, to be able to act upon it, but otherwise it's a non-emergency to um do it during the budget times and during the scheduled times. So I would that be an opportunity to leave it how it is presently, or would that cause us to change?
I I mean, that would be set fairly similar present. If there is an emergency, um, again, like Derek said, if we have need for another election position during election time, those those are things we'll we'll uh bring to you. So again, I think that's pretty similar to how we operate it now.
It does have an action.
Yeah, we didn't want to tie your hands.
Yeah.
We didn't we didn't want to force an action, but we didn't want to tie your hand to no action either. So we we gave you that option there.
Ron, you have any comments? Any concerns?
No, it's sorry, the the wifi dropped out and I had to scramble to get onto the iPad. But anyway, I'm back. Um, no, I I I I think I think I'm consistent to where I think if it's an emergency, then that's what we need to have. We need to have have that brought to us. And I think that Austin, you're the gatekeeper as, you know, kind of that full-time HR person to to help define whether it's urgent or not, but I'd I'd rather those, you know, stick to uh at at budget time. You know, we just don't want it to be um used as, you know, just, you know, i- if it's not, if it's not urgent. So I think you I think the direction for me, I think, would be you to be the gatekeeper and present that to us. Um, and we define whether that's urgent in nature or not.
Direction taken. Thank you.
Is that is is that a motion?
Well, I think that's just that's just discussion and direction, because I don't think we're making much of a change. Um, but that's the direction that I think in my mind that I I feel that I'm, that's where my thought process is, and I would welcome hearing hearing yours, so.
So my thought process is along with Ron, if we'd have the need for the emergency, I would like to act upon that. But those should be um in a given year, few and far between, and not a plan thing that we lean on. Um, so we'd do it during the budgetary times, but if we do have uh an opportunity to keep a employee that we need or to create another one or to let one go um that we have that opportunity to be flexible there. I don't I don't want to tie us into a corner to where we can only talk about that at certain times. So I would prefer to have the flexibility, as Mr. Campbell also discussed in his discussion.
I agree.
Okay.
Okay, thank you very much. Appreciate the direction.
And thank you for taking the time to clarify me on that. I don't know how far Ron and Dave were, but thank you for that discussion.
Okay. So we'll move into our next item of business. Derek Revere.
Very good. I I'd like to cover a little bit of format, the budget uh process, not the budget, the legislative process. Um, the Senate last Monday was the last day that senators could introduce new bills being spent in this current legislative session. Um, that deadline for the House is this coming Monday, the tenth of February. Um, that has resulted as of today in fourteen hundred and sixty-seven bills having been introduced. Um, that is a little bit of a misnomer. So that's how many bills will be assigned a number. And so I expect that number to climb a little bit. The House members are limited to a total of seven bills after first the first seven days and introduce a billion. And there have been a couple of uh representatives, three hours that rep uh introduced more than sixty bills. Um, but they they're limited to seven more. So that four fourteen hundred and sixty-seven may climb a little bit closer to the fifteen hundred mark. Um, that's a little lower than we've seen in the last few years. Um, I say that is, that's kind of a limit. So that's the number of bill numbers that will be assigned. But there is a process that that we'll talk about uh now a little bit, and then going forward, it's called striker. So a bill can say something very innocuous. You you can spot these things. They come up. They're called the technical corrections or some other innocuous name. And they're introduced, and then language is being worked on for something else. And so when it goes to committee, they'll say, I I want to offer an amendment, and they can completely change the character of the bill. It may look like uh technical corrections, you know, the uh Arizona Corporation Commission rules or something. And next you know, you've got a bill that that talks about where you can uh drill wells. And so that's a bit of a moving number, but at least the the amount of work is starting to be defined. Um, things move very quickly at this stage in the legislature, so we are fielding between uh I know the recorder. Um, Bianca and myself, we're fielding uh requests for input ten to fifty bills a week. Um, and these are bills that have been vetted by CSA, ACO, and other groups that are saying, hey, this may have an impact on counties generally or on Green Lake County specifically. So we're we're firing back feedback on how we think this would affect us. Uh, there's a number of election bills that can change the way we do elections. Um, we're, of course, keeping a very close eye on bills that affect water. Um, that's that, as you are maybe aware, the governor has begun to to exercise previous authority given to the governor's office to establish uh active management units, uh active management areas, AMAs. One of you to ban and and one in Wilcox, uh even though the voters voted that down just uh two years ago, three years ago, I guess now. Um, but nevertheless, there's a lot of activity around water. There's a lot of activity around planning and zoning, mostly trying to increase the housing stock in urban areas. Uh, city processes and some of the urban county processes are very uh detailed and very uh regulatory burdensome. And so there's bills like that. What we do is we monitor and say what might affect Green Lake County. So planning and zoning may affect this. But our planning zoning overlay is is pretty light compared to anybody else. Other things like election changes, there was a, for example, there's a bill that's been introduced and they made it through committee already that would say you, if you do a vote center, you have to have a vote center. You can't be any citizen voting that vote center cannot be more than two and a half miles away from the vote center. So we use three vote centers. If that bill, you know, were to go through, we could potentially have seven or eight vote centers. Um, there's a push to move away from vote centers towards precinct polling again. There's still some talk about using all paper ballots. Um, it's sort of all of the rhetoric we heard back in twenty twenty, and then the following session has been brought up again. A lot of those will not get legs. They may not get out of the legislature, and many of those, if they do, will likely be vetoed by the governor. Unfortunately, what is happening right now is the governor's race has already started. You're starting to see uh news articles. People are posturing. People have announced that they're running for for the governor. President Trump has already made an endorsement in that race. What that does is it is it casts a atmosphere of setting the governor up. So some bills that will be passed by the the Republicans hold the House and the Senate, they will pass those bills through just to get a veto to put her on record of saying, hey, this idea that our constituents think is a really good idea, she said no to. And that's not a, that's not new this year. That's been going on since forever. Um, but it seems to be more acute. Uh, the governor is perceived to be vulnerable in her reelection bid. And so even she has begun to take positions that are softened. For example, she supported a recent federal piece of legislation called the Lincoln Riley Act, um that many perceive to be hostile to immigrant populations. Um, but but that posturing is taking place. Why do we care? It means that some bills where we may not spend any energy, we may have to spend some energy. Um, either at the governor's office, if it's a bad idea, or somewhere along the legislative process. My primary jobs, look at these things and say, how does this affect Green Lake? Do we need to spend our limited political capital on this issue or that issue? Um, and those conversations take place almost every day this time of year with contacts down in Phoenix on on various aspects of different bills. Um, February twenty-first is the last day the bills can be heard in their house of origin. So if it was filed as an HB twenty-something, it's got to be heard in a House committee and by the House floor by that day. In the Senate, uh same date. What happens is some bills will come in and the Speaker of the House or the Senate President will say, I'm not assigning that to any committee. And effectively effectively puts it in a drawer and that bill, while it's still technically alive, is dead because it will never get a hearing. Um, bills can be heard in committee. They can be amended. They can be voted, you know, down. At that point, it dies. It can come back up in another form. But February twenty-first first is an important deadline because that marks the end of the first phase of the legislature. The following week is what they call crossover week. So all the bills that the House passed get sent to the Senate. All the bills the Senate passed get sent to the House. That, all those bills that have to go through the same process in the other other chamber. Um, same thing happens, amendments, strike everythings and so forth. But this is an important deadline we want to watch. That fourteen fifteen hundred uh total bill number will probably be cut in half or more by February twenty-first. There'll be a lot of ideas, good, bad, or ugly, that simply will not make it past that first section. At crossover, another bunch will die. It's not uncommon for out of two thousand bills in the session, maybe one-tenth of them actually get out of the the legislature and and represented to the governor. This year, it'll be interesting to see how many actually make it. There are some that people really, really believe that their idea is good, and they're just not going to survive. Others are posturing and others are are there's there's, believe it or not, quite a few bipartisan bills funding uh school lunches. Uh, there's a bipartisan effort to try and keep paying teachers in the in the district in Phoenix where they are some twenty-plus million in the red. But there's a lot of parts and shit going on as well. So um, if there are issues that that we need to use our very limited political capital on, I will raise that with you. Uh, if it's something that needs our attention quickly, if I need to grab one of you, I'll let you know. We need to go down to committee hearing. But I've not seen anything at this point that has raised that flag for us. There's a couple of discussions that have been a part of that we may want to weigh in on a little bit later, but for now, um by and large, the ideas have little effect on our day-to-day in Green Lake County. The other thing that is a concern to me is what's happening at the federal level, and that is freezing of federal funds, uh closing of federal programs. Um, whether you like that idea or don't like that idea as a citizen of this country, it has a trickle-down effect on budgets. So things like PILT, things like our secure rule schools, things like federal monies, there was there's talk today that the president may sign executive order as early as today abolishing the Department of Education. There's already lawsuits lined up to say you can't do that. Um, but if the funding stops, then our local schools may be affected by that. Um, there's all kinds of federal dollars that trickle down to our our prosecution, law enforcement services. They trickle down through the state. So we'll be watching those things very closely as they, whether at the federal level or an Arizona response. And I'll tell you, there's some talk that the Arizona should mimic the Doge could Doge agency at federal level. And so there's talk about eliminating local uh agencies, programs, some of which don't affect as much. Um, but things even like the the Board of Cosmetology may be on the chopping block. Others that may be more significant are on the chopping block or could be. So that's what we'll be watching more closely than the bills is how does this federal trickle down? How does the federal approach to budgeting trickle down into Arizona, and what does that affect our budgets? So that's what we're watching most closely. That's informative. I don't have any action. I just wanted to update you on the process and the things that that I am worried about most uh most acutely as we approach our own budget season. And that I certainly stand for any questions.
Just have any questions?
Thank you for the summary.
No, none for me, but yeah, thank you. It'll be interesting.
Yeah.
Because there's always a, there's always unintended consequences of of actions and and, you know, we see uh when we're talking about, you know, trying to reduce federal spending, we understand that, and and I think all of us could say, yeah, I think the federal government spends too much. But uh, yeah, that's a trickle-down effect and the unintended consequences of affecting things that that uh you know, we we maintain our our budget using. So anyway, thank you for that information.
Thank you, Derek. Okay. Bianca, floor is yours.
February seventh is um LPC will meet at every Friday for the rest of the month. The tenth, um, we'll start our new four-day work week schedule. Um, our offices will be open Monday through Thursday and closed every Friday starting Wednesday. Our offices will be open Monday through Thursday and closed every Friday starting Wednesday. Um county managers on the fourteenth, our offices are closed February seventeenth um for president's day. Our next board meeting in February will be the nineteenth, small counties and EGO. Also on the um nineteen and then the Health Trust Conference starts on the nineteenth and it goes to the twenty first. CSA on the twentieth and CGO will meet at ten on the twenty first.
Coach is gone.
And that's all I have for the month of February unless the board has anything to add.
Anybody have anything to add to this?
No, Mr. President.
Not this time, thank you.
Okay.
Um going into March first through the fourth is Enable Conference in DC. Um LPC will meet on the seventh and again every Friday for the month. March tenth, Morenci Spring Break starts through the twenty first. Our first board meeting in March is on the eleventh, county managers on the fourteenth. Um Duncan Spring Break Fall starts on the seventeenth through the twenty first. March nineteenth is Small Counties EGO, um CSA on the twentieth. And our second board meeting is on the twenty fifth. Um and that's all I have for the month of March. Need to add anything else?
The first day of spring is on the twentieth and it looks like it's spring right now. Gosh, heaven forbid when summer's here.
Spring has sprung.
Wow.
Going into April, first meeting is April first, um first board meeting. LPC on the fourth, um every Friday for the month of April. On the eleventh, that's county managers. Our second board meeting is on the fifteenth. Small counties and equal on the sixteenth, CSA on the seventeenth. And that's all I have for April.
Mr. Chairman, if the board might consider, we don't need to get direction today, but. The meeting on the first of April follows one week after our meeting on the twenty fifth of March. If if we wanted to bump our April meetings down to the eighth and the twenty second. That that might be more efficient. We don't mean to do it now, but if you'd give some thought to that, if you'd like to direct us, direct us to do that, we can make that change.
I was gonna ask if that was an April Fool's, but.
Whenever we talk about. Yeah, there you go. Uh but if you give us that direction, we will update it as well on our on our uh website.
You know, I, why don't we just do it now?
Let's do that now and let's make a nice second thought.
Yeah, let's let's.
Board's direction and we will make that move to the eighth and the twenty.
And the twenty second.
Okay.
Okay.
Sounds good.
Okay. So that's it Bianca?
Yes, that's all.
It's gonna be April Fools, we can all come to the board meeting with bare feet because it's earthy that on the twenty second, so.
Uh okay, we'll move into our next item of business, consent agenda, entertain for motion.
Go ahead Will, if you want to.
Um. I I moved to approve the uh consent agenda.
I'll second that.
Motion has been made and second, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, I just have it so ordered. Okay, we'll move into our next item of business supervisor reports. Either one of you folks have any anything to share?
I'd just like to share for just one moment, I've been able to attend all of the Legislative Policy Committee meetings on Friday. Uh Fridays in January and February and they've been very informative. I'd like to echo what. Uh Derek Repeer has said that it seems like there's a lot of bills coming down. Um not many of them affect uh Greenlee County directly. But um I've had the opportunity to learn a lot more and to see what's coming up, so I will continue to. Attend those meetings and continue to report back um at our um Board of Supervisor meetings as I. See anything that comes up that may affect our county. So thank you. Thank you for your time, President.
Thank you. How about you, Ron?
No, nothing specifically. Um I did want to mention though um that we talked about uh you know, youth. Uh participating, um as you know, as I said before, I'm I'm attending a a national conference for substance abuse coalitions. And um and and it's here in DC and we're we're able to bring. Uh three different students from both the Duncan and Morenci Schools. Uh to come back here and represent Greenlee County as well. And so that's gonna be and and they have been tasked with uh. You know, when we do visit Capitol Hill uh tomorrow. Um they're the gonna be the only ones that speak, you know, that's gonna be coming from the youth and I just that thought that was. That was really cool and interesting. And so I just wanted to, you know, that there are. Youth from from Greenlee County back here representing as well, but uh that's all that I had, but thank you.
You might want to invite him to one of our board meetings when you come back.
Yeah, no, that'd be great.
So they can share their experience. Yeah.
Yep.
Okay.
I agree. Thank you.
Thanks. I don't have anything, so. We will move into our next item of business after a ten minute break or so into work sessions, so. We'll take a break.
Work session. Outline state acquisition timelines and processes identified and defined desired state land for purchase. Identify potential areas of concern, including such things as water availability and evaluating private interest. State land and disposal of town owned land to private developers. For homeowners and exploit utility of housing authority to advance housing initiatives.
That was a very long explanation, wasn't it?
It was.
We're going to cover a lot of ground and and what we wanted to do is is. Give you a very unvarnished as best we can objective look at at some of the things that that. The opportunities that exist in the Y area, some of the risks and some of the other things that that as an entity is the county entity we ought to be considering.
I just want to ask Ron if he's on, are you back, Ron?
I'm on, I'm on, I was here.
Okay, alright. Um, and so, so this, like I said, we want to talk about every aspect of it if the the last slide is other things that may have come up. Um, if if Ron were here, we would do this out on the table and and sort of point and talk and scratch on maps and stuff. Um, so it'll be a little bit more structured, but it is intended to be interactive. So at any point, if you have a question, interrupt me, stop us. I I've got, um, Reed is here, Gary is here to answer some and they'll do parts of the presentation. Little flesh out some of the things we've been talking about. I will tell you at the onset, we don't have all the answers. We have quite a few and we've got the right questions. Even though we don't always have the right answers. So as we work through this, please interrupt, please ask questions, please give your thoughts. It's not intended to be a one way conversation. We're going to cover at least six different areas here. We're going to try to talk about identifying the exact piece of land that we might want to target. Uh, we'll talk about the process and the expected timeline, so the expectations can be set accurately. Um, we'll talk about water availability. Um, one of the lessons we learned coming out of the Tyler Farms experiences is the first question is water. It always is water. Um, whether that's legal availability or actual physical availability, whatever that case may be. We're going to walk you through some of what we know at this point and what we hope to learn in the very near future. Um, we're going to talk about, um, evaluating the private interest in in this type of a development. And and defining private market risk. Uh, and and how much of that risk, um, might be taken on in the government entity and how we divide that risk. And and measure it and try and and make that wise decision. Uh, we'll talk about pre zoning and infrastructure planning. And then, um, some of the advantages, cautions, considerations, uh, if the county were to, uh, consummate this whole process. By acquiring the land as a as a county asset. So let's start, um, here identifying land to, uh, now I I'm a little bit flat footed, so I'm relying on on maps that that Reed has shown me. But as my understanding, um, we've identified an area, um. That is roughly a hundred and twenty-three acres here of of potential acquisition locations. They're defined roughly because at some point in the process, we would need to do a a survey and define very specifically. By meets and bounds of what exactly we would like to acquire from state land. But in general, they surround, so so the whole big question, W Y E or the Y. I've always called it the Y because that section between, uh, one, five and four looks to me like a Y. Um, and so we call it the Y. But all of the parcels surround either the established county park or on either side of Skyline Drive. Uh, and then Ward's Canyon Drive, but that's the area we've been talking about. We originally were under the impression that state land would prefer that we we call out sections in sort of blocks. That were, um, squared off, if you will. And so you you begin to lay, you know, squares and rectangles over the face of the land. And it doesn't always line up real well. So you can see that area to the southwest of the park leaves out a lot of otherwise developable land. So as as we began to expand the the squares, if you will, we began to take in more, but you also end up taking in, uh. What would be impossible to develop like that drainage, um, in this area here, if I can get my cursor over it. Whereas before it was out of the blocks. But otherwise flat land, we include it. We also grab a big section of drainage that could not be used for housing development. Um, there are other areas, for example, down on this, uh, part of the map below here that have some steep, uh. You know, terrain and contours to them as well. But as we visit with state land, we learned that we actually can can follow the contour of the land. And so, uh, this, this. Polygon shape, that makes it sound like I'm smarter than I am, a polygon, but this oddball shape here actually follows the, um. The contour of the land so that most of what we would call out is is flat buildable land. Um. Not all of it, and that that line on the bottom of the screen goes down and begins to approach our landfill operations. But there's, there's a a fair amount of flat land there, hundred fifteen acres, um. It it is unlikely, we're we're seeing some evidence, for example, um. It's difficult to develop a a common water or waste disposal, um, you know, wastewater treatment plant type thing. Or something on this scale, this magnitude, it they're very expensive to put in, very expensive to maintain. So. Initially, our thought has been that that if this were developed, it would most likely be in half acre lots, no less than half acre lots. So you've got room for a septic disposal and the ability to to do a redundant system in case you ever need to move a move a septic or a leach line. Uh, and that size of a lot would give you that. So at a hundred fifteen acres, you're looking at at roughly sixty to sixty-five in that neighborhood of of. Uh, building lots. Um, some of that would be lost, of course, because you've got roads and you'd need right away. Um, you've got, uh, you know, other, you know, some area around the park you'd want to protect and so forth. But generally speaking, this would yield somewhere between fifty and sixty building lots is our best estimate. Um, with that kind of development, we would want to consider perhaps, um. Beefing up skyline to a true artery where it can handle more traffic. Um, we all know, everybody who lives here. Uh, that shift chain, you know, you have very little pressure on our roads except for twice a day. And and then you've got all kinds of pressure on our roads. And so we would anticipate that this kind of development would also put more demand on our on our, uh, artery road skyline going into this area. Um. So I asked Reed in in response to some discussions we've had over the last week and so forth, I says. What if we went big? What if we, what if we just looked at all of the flat area in in this area? And, um, so I had him sort of map out all of the tops of the maces in the area. Uh, that area number six, uh, actually begins right below the bottom half of Loma Linda. And there's a slope that kind of goes down at a gradual slope. It's about at the same angle as the lower part of Loma Linda. Um, and then it kind of drops off and it levels into another flat area. Below that lower leg of six that you go across the the drainage there and there's another flat area, but we didn't go that far. Um, we expanded the area number four, flew down to the to the bottom of the land or to the top of the landfill. Uh, the landfill footprint, uh, currently includes, uh, part going over skyline and that corner sketches over into the. To the Mesa across to the northwest. And then we essentially followed the contour lines of of what was, you know, the number five, but there's a long Mesa out there. If you, and I know Supervisor. Gomez is very familiar with this, but there's a lot of flat area out there across skyline from the landfill. Um, that does not necessarily consider proximity to the landfill. It's simply flat land. That that could, you know, support fairly easy development. Um, so as 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 we go forward. One of the things we want to do as particularly as we as we, you know, look for and and perhaps develop partnerships. Is is do we want to consider a larger ask or a smaller ask? One of the things that state land has told us twice now, and and we don't know the mechanics of how this works, but they talked about staging. So that so you go through the process and call out in this case, um. Three hundred and, you know, almost four hundred acres, um, but you wouldn't, you wouldn't necessarily put it all up for sale at the same time. How that works, we don't know. And that's a discussion we need to have with state land to understand how that staging process works from their point of view. But it may save the cost of going through the process multiple times, um, and and still make the land available at some point. Um, so.
Derek.
Yes.
Hey, so, uh, you know, last meeting, we talked about that state land, you know, had, uh, I. They were talking about that they didn't want people land banking, and that's what this kind of seems like, but but it sounds like now that they might be encouraging. I don't, I'm not sure if they are encouraging, but but are they supportive of us possibly just doing that same thing? You know, because we are, we would be. Land baking in a sense.
We actually have not that asked that question directly. They've simply suggested that staging may be one way to approach. You know, let's say, for example, we've got a a a home builder who has the capital to build five homes at a time. They may be very unwilling to put up the capital to buy thirty or forty acres. Knowing they're going to bill it out, you know, two and a half acres at a time over the next four or five years. Land banking as well is. It it's, it it depends on how you look at it. Now, if if we were down in, you know, say northeast of Scottsdale, we're looking at the same purchase. We might, we or a private developer might own this and have houses up, you know, within within a year. Um, other developments take more time. And so the idea of simply pulling something out of the state land trust. In order to put it in our bank, if you will, as the county is something I think they would discourage. Um, I don't know that state land is making much off of this. There's, there's a state land grazing lease on this. Those are are frankly kind of pennies. I think their bigger concern would be, well, if if this happens in Greenlee. Then why doesn't, you know, maybe a hockey team owner do this in Scottsdale, Phoenix? And then just sit on it until and that that land is worth a whole lot more. One of the things that in our discussions with state land is that. The state land department has a mission, and that is to maximize the return on state land. So whether that's putting otherwise, um, low value land into grazing. Or if a sale goes through, you try to maximize the sale. That'll come up a little bit later in our discussion. But the concept of land banking is is something that I think they would discourage, and we would want to be cautious about it as well. We, for example, own forty acres in Franklin along with a grazing lease and and Austin is about what, six or eight cows like that? It it's a very, very small grazing lease. We've had it for almost thirty years. It was purchased as an economic development acquisition. The idea at the time was that there would be some sort of an industrial recycling or industrial, um, usage of some some sort. And, um. We acquired it. Uh, there is a wash, a a significant drainage that runs right through the middle of it. And there's a railroad that runs right through the middle of it. Now, at the time, if you're going to use it for something industrial, the railroad actually looked like a positive. But here nearly three decades later, it sits just as it did when we purchased it. And so. In that regard, and that was a a piece of private land that we acquired. It was not state land. But we banked, if you will, banked land for. For twenty-eight years and and at at the present moment. We don't have any plan to do something. There there's, there's not a viable plan at this point. I said only half tongue in cheek. I read an article. Last week that said that they need more rocket launch sites in the country because we're putting all kinds of things in the air. And I said, you know what? I think forty acres for a rocket launch site is a grand idea. I should call some Elon Musk or somebody and tell them to put a rocket launch site there. But but, uh, Supervisor Campbell, you raised that, you raised a good point, and that is land banking, um, may look like decades and it may look like years. Here it may look like decades, um, in in the the Phoenix metropolitan, it may look like months. But but it is something that state land is not inclined to just divest themselves of land just because we would like to have it. So.
Thank you.
Um. And and Reed, the six hundred seventy-five, is that just the yellow area? Is that the yellow and the landfill included? So that's just the yellow. So that that, of course, uh. Takes in the drainages, this one that that comes off skyline, that it begins a very narrow drainage up here by the five in this picture. And becomes a significant drainage by the time you, you know, leave the yellow area. So this type of a call out includes a lot of, um, land that would not be usable for housing. This whole slope here. Is steep, it leads up to the landfill, our landfill, the way it's been managed is is not an eyesore. It's been very well managed. Um, but the closer you get, of course, uh, and and in this case, the the physical attributes of the land make it difficult to develop. But that's, that was sort of our our large call out.
Derek, probably worth pointing out that state land also, they don't like working. Any man in the industry is like, did it, so it bets up against. Or excuse me, very beyond western. But they don't want us to cherry pick. Areas that are good for development and leave them with all the canyons, for example, and that's why.
It's easier for their management, easier for our management, but you're right, it doesn't, doesn't leave this range, you know, layout on the on the, uh. The land. So in this case, the the colored areas are areas that are suitable. Suitable, I say, they they are more or less flat, they're they're more conducive to development. Obviously, the areas that aren't shaded here, you you would either have very difficult development or no development at all. Some of these, uh, slopes off of the flat area are are typical Mesa type slopes. They're very steep. You're not going to put anything on them. And then this, of course, represents the entire footprint, uh, of possibility, uh, of acquisition. Let's talk a little bit about of what our realistic, uh, timeframe for acquiring land from, uh, state land is. I'm going to pull up a. A chart and I hope it it broadcasts well, um. This is, um. I'm not sure I can make that bigger or not. Um. This represents our actual timeline and cost that we've put into acquiring land near the landfill. We we've sought to acquire approximately ninety acres, isn't it?
Um, yes.
Okay. You know, there may be multiple copies of this. Yeah, here, let's give those two. And Mr. Campbell, we can send your copy of this as well.
Thank you.
Reed, Reed, you already sent this to me, right? Is this what I'm looking at? That Reed, I I'm looking at it, uh, Reed had sent me a copy separately.
So, um. And Reed, I'm going to ask you, execute HPTP. What does that mean? That's the very last entry.
Sort of property treatment plan. We had to do that, or we will, so they'll sell us the property. Before we execute that plan, but they don't want us to disturb anymore rocks and so.
I think that the number one thing that that I would draw your attention to is that we began this process in August of twenty-two. And the auction is scheduled to take place June of twenty-five, so we will be thirty-four months into it by the time we acquire the land. Couple of caveats on that. One is. We can push on our things that we have to get done as hard as we can. We can encourage state land on their processes, but once it gets into state land, that is a them. Problem and not us. We can encourage them, we can work with them, we can provide things. Um, they are understaffed. I don't think that their director has been, um, approved by the Senate yet. Um, so there's a lot of things going on. Um. There is a another issue that we see from time to time, that is urban legislators. Have a hard time thinking outside the Maricopa County line. Where sixty percent or more, sixty-five percent or more of our legislators reside. As a result. They don't always see the value of state land. They're underfunded. What does that mean? That means that this thirty-four month process could be perhaps be shortened. We've been told that optimistically, if everything worked right. As short as fifteen months. I think that's probably more optimistic than we should be for something this size. Um, more realistically, our best case scenario is probably maybe a little under two years. And I'm going to defer to Reed on this because he's actually interactive with state land. But I think we would be naive to think, to set our expectations for anything less than than two years. If we get there, great, we can celebrate. But I would, I would caution the board to not set your expectation at fifteen or eighteen months. Reed, what have you got to add to that guess?
Um, just to reiterate that we have did not, we have not pushed on this landfill purchase. Have needed to, we're looking way, way out on the private. And for what it's worth, I know that we're having a relationship with state land. So maybe they'll leverage that to invert them. To move a little value when that's otherwise not our.
Is that ballpark of two years? Is that, is that a realistic timeline?
Say also the the timeframe is a little bit, the function of the size of the tape. And so like you go for that big enchilada, the six hundred whatever acres. Just the the work that we do, our alte survey, our art survey, our. They want to say, they'll be going to take a lot more time than say five, well, for.
Um. Another reality that we run into, um, is that we're going along during our process. And and I I say this not tongue in cheek because it's happened, but. Some developer wants to purchase a prime piece of property in the Phoenix Metro. If this sells, maybe we're looking at half a million, a million dollars. You take fifty acres near Scottsdale and that's worth a hundred million dollars. State land will shift resources to that higher priority sale. And that's not, that's not necessarily catering to the urban. That's putting hard, lots of hard dollars in the state land trust, which is distributed out to schools. That's the reason we own state land in Arizona.
Due to budgetary reasons that many people over there.
Certainly, they increase their 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 corpus or their their, uh, their base funding, which is then put into investments and then that money's distributed. Fifty million or a hundred million going into the conference is a lot more significant than a million. And so. And that's not a criticism, that's simply saying our job at state land is to maximize returns from the schools. And we do that a lot better with a parcel selling in in high primary at Phoenix Metro. Than in Greenlee County where most people in legislature don't know where we are. So we once had a famous story, we went to go visit the governor, we were greeted by the nice young lady out front and she says, you're from where? Greenlee? Is that a city? No, that's a county in Arizona. And we all kind of went slack jaw, but such is the case. So I I would encourage you, look at this, you'll see on the right is a running total of how much. Um, has been spent and how much is anticipated to be spent in the acquisition of the land near the landfill. Um. I'll I'll talk about some of the reasons why, but we would anticipate. The cost, depending on the size of land we call out. The cost for surveys, the cost for the the antipodes research, that kind of stuff would go up. So I would ballpark that the cost for going through the process in somewhere between thirty and fifty thousand dollars. The likely cost per acre would be far more than nine hundred dollars an acre as well. Um, no one's going to build a house right at the foot of the landfill. But, um, or on the landfill footprint, if you will. So we would expect, uh, a parcel of land. That is intended for housing development would be more expensive than land intended for use as a landfill. So that running total on the right is is instructive, but it's probably not going to reflect exact costs on this acquisition. But it's a good place to start and give you an idea of both the time and the money involved. Both the time and the money involved in this kind of a. Of a um process. Any questions on the land acquisition process or timeline?
None for me. Thank you.
Just to belabor that point a bit, I, I could see, for example, an art survey. You'd spend that entire amount. That we show on this exhibit. For a parcel outside of just the arts.
And art surveys, you, you recall we found the line of rocks from the CCC camps? An art survey is looking for any of that kind of antiquity or any kind of that archaeological. Uh heaven forbid, you, you run into an ancient village that's, you know, on the mesa there. And, and those exist in Greenlee County. They're, they're actually all over the place near the river. You'll find uh remains of, of uh ancient villages. And, and those all of a sudden throw extra time, extra money and may kill the project. Depending what, what they find. But you don't know until you get there and start finding arrowheads or whatever it is they find, charge of pottery. Um. On this as well, um. One of the things that we know. Is that um. Share this again. One of the things we know from our experience. Is. Economy in this area changes. And it changes with the copper cycle. So. We have been area i- in times of, of boom. Where, where you could. You could sell, you know, anything because there's so much demand for housing. You recall like when they built the um. Uh Medcalf Mill. There was, there were, there were people lining up to camp out on the river. There was people everywhere. And so if, if you happen, if, if this happens to come online during a boom. Then, then the housing demand is gonna be up. If, if it happens to come online a year and a half, two years from now, we're in the bottom of a copper cycle or recession or anything else. So that extra timeline adds uncertainty. To, to what the demand may be at the day, you know, that it may be ready to do something with. Uh but, but keeping that in mind, like I say, for landfill, it doesn't make much difference. Um it, it, it doesn't change the dynamics, but for housing, it could change dramatically. And none of us have a crystal ball. We do, I watch the copper market, but it, it's sort of a, a real time. I check on it every two or three days. So where price copper is. Check stock prices, those kind of things. Um but no one can fully. If, for example, if you were sitting in this meeting in, say, late twenty eighteen. Who saw the pandemic coming? Nobody did. And so those are kind of things to keep in mind. Um. There are two things. I'm, I'm, I'm gonna let Reed take over this part of the, the discussion. But there's two things that we want to talk about with respect to water availability. If you, if you don't have water either actually in the area or legally not in the area, and legally doesn't seem to be a problem in this area. Like we ran into with the Tyler Farms area. But we want to talk about a tabletop analysis that we've had done. We commissioned a study. Uh by a hydrogeologist and we'll talk about that a little bit. And the other is uh the availability of the local water company that's already established in the area. They own two separate uh entities. Uh but it's under same ownership now. And we'll talk about what we've learned from them um up to this point. Reed? You tell me when to advance the slide. I said, you tell me when to advance, dance the slide.
So this gentleman is actually coming to visit with Derek and I tomorrow. And kind of giving a oral report on a study. And it's, it's a big study. Basically, he did it. It's a thought desktop study because he. Didn't go out drilling well, we're gonna think. All of that, that's sort of the recommendation that we do for the next decade. So they're quite expensive because. Got to drill up and then seal them off when you're done. Uh but anyways. Uh so I have liked and feeling from where that's where the water is. Yeah, strange thirty feet, less than thirty degrees of five hundred. Uh this will be an interesting that. Over time, he went back to the nineteen six, for your nineteen eighty-seven or something like that and said, probably go back to the nineteen forty's. The water though hasn't changed much, but bored down. And then he said in that wide area. Um probably have moderate water world yields or capacity. And then he noted that. Where do you are gonna struggle a little bit and find out. With arsenic. Other contaminants are growing in the water, but they don't. Exceed the EPA thinking water going to extend.
One of the other challenges, so, so let's suppose that money was no object and was not a limiting factor. There's another limiting factor that, that frankly, we haven't thought of until just recently. And that is. You can't go onto your neighbor's land and drill a well to find out what's underneath it. Um and in this case, our neighbor is state of Arizona. So without some sort of a permit or permission to go out and sink wells. To, to see, to test. Maybe a problem. We haven't asked that question, but as, as a general rule. I would imagine the state land is not real keen on us just dropping holes here and there randomly on what's their land.
Others have done that, but they have a process for it. But so then you're facing twin. So you have to work with ADW car. And there's.
So. The cost of developing better data, taking more of the uncertainty out, if you will. Um. It's fairly steep, at least for, for an entity of our size um to drop wells and, and find out what's underneath there and its quality and so forth. Um not undoable necessarily, but it may increase that timeline. And it, and it would certainly increase our, our exploratory cost. In order to bring it out from risk into moderate or less risk. And the other question, I don't know, Reed, maybe we'll find this out tomorrow, but any idea what moderate means? That's, that's a lawyer type word, but you don't really want to be precise.
Um so to me, moderate is encouraging the type of housing that we're talking about. Um relative to agriculture, for example, that require. Lot of water. So a nine tent well at thirty-five gallons a minute. Multiply that by sixty and then turn four. That's a lot of gallons per day and it'll serve a lot of houses. So I. I know that's a pretty uh maybe a little stern, but I, I find it encouraging.
You know the comment you made, Derek, about uh drilling to reduce the risk? That ugly word. Uh is partnerships.
Correct.
Bring that into the picture.
Correct. And, and, and as a, a sort of a running theme through this is, I, I hope is running the back of your mind is, is. Where do we identify? How do we establish and how do we work in, in partnership with others? Like you say, if, if uh, if Pulte Homes comes out and says, we want to build a bunch of homes. Wonderful. We got a great partner. Yeah. But, but yeah, that should be a thread running through the back of our minds all the time is, is where are the natural partnerships? I, I would tell people all the time, I'm constantly looking for partners. If it makes sense to us and it makes sense to our partner, there's probably a way to work something out. And so um but, but you're right. I mean, reducing risk is certainly something that. People who are investing want to have as little risk as possible. Water is, is curse of big ones. Ready for the next one?
Well, that's the area that we gave basin wells uh at our areas.
That northwest part corner. Or wait, locate us if you could on that. Like where's Loma Linda?
Right here, watch. And then over here, you have Loma Linda.
Up in the northwest corner, is that the tabletop area?
Uh yeah, right around the last gun range.
Okay. And so that's where he's done his desktop study on.
Went all the way down three like. That through the airport.
And I, Ronald, you, you probably see the slide and not, not Reed pointing at it, but were you able to figure out where all these items were?
Yeah, I mean, that, that uh. Brown spot in the middle, is that the landfill?
Yes, sir.
Yes.
Yeah, so that, that orient me a little bit and I, I can see where about where tabletop is i- in the northwest. So that, okay, I got it.
Okay.
Uh Supervisor Gomez has been interacting with Cactus State. They're a subsidiary of Central State's Water, which is back east of ways, but Cactus State has bought. A lot of water systems in the state of Arizona over the last few several years. Including the Loma Linda water system and, and the Verde B water system. Um so those two systems are under common ownership now, which in my mind is a good thing. Um he sent uh several months ago, he sent uh Supervisor Gomez a. A draft will serve letter, so. He didn't affix his signature to it. He was sending it to us for comment and. We told him at the time, it looked good. We didn't have any comments, but. Uh. The devil's in the details here. So their Cactus State is regulated by Arizona Corporation Commission. And for them to service the Y area, they have to modify their service area and their certificate of convenience and necessity sixteen N. Um what's important for us, I think, is that. Cactus State is expecting somebody else. They don't really care who. But it would be Greenlee County or a developer or another interested third party. Would, would repair engineering plan and cost estimates for the new infrastructure. And this is important too, because he says, you'll have to identify. A water source for the Y. And he talked about a well. Over at Verde B that they don't currently use. And he uh said that well, it's a possibility for that well to serve the Y area, but. But that well is one that I think has some issues with arsenic. So you'd have to incorporate into the facilities, some kind of a. A system that scrubbed the arsenic out. Those are out there. Um. And then. And then uh the developer would not only pay for the engineering plan and the cost estimate, but they would also pay for the infrastructure. Cactus State would not pay for any infrastructure, the water infrastructure. But they will give the developer, and this is regulated by the ECC, they'll give the developer ten percent of their revenue. Every year for up to ten years. And they would execute a main extension agreement uh developer agreement with. Um the developer or Greenlee County or whoever that is. And that would be approved by the. Corporation.
But let me clarify. Um. What, what is this and what is it not? In other words, is this a guarantee that cactus can serve the area with, with water?
Uh I would consider it a statement of interest.
And, and.
It's wonderful. Um. And he wants to serve. That area.
Do that's, that's contingent upon some results he seeks, right?
Yeah, yeah, finding water and, and uh figuring out who's gonna pay for the infrastructure.
You and Supervisor Gomez have had the most meaningful interaction, but to this point. I know it's gonna be a, a term that's harder to find, but do we have a guarantee that they could supply water to a hundred, two hundred, three hundred homes?
Um I think we have Fred's guarantee that they'll try really hard. But. I, I think right now. He doesn't have all of the information, data that he needs to make that hard commitment on behalf of.
And, and Derek, with that said. Reed just recently sent him the report. From uh. From the hydrologist, from the hydro, yeah. So that's gonna factor in on. That's what Reed is mentioning is when we, when I first. Went to him and asked him. Is there a capacity here to build a couple of hundred homes? Uh like Reed said, he, he gave a, a word of interest. I mean, uh submitted a letter of interest to us. But we also told him that we were gonna hire. And so that comes into factor after the fact, after he goes through that also.
I, I would say that in this area and, and Reed, please flesh this out or correct me. But, but in, in terms of, of Cactus State being able to deliver water, there's gonna be several things you're gonna look at. One is how much water is available? Whether that's new wells or existing wells or whatever. Two is going to be um, how many homes are looking at? If, if, if you're looking at sixty-five homes in that hundred and fifteen acres. Um. I actually did that backwards. It should be double hundred and fifteen, not half. Because you're going half acres. So if it's two hundred, two hundred homes in that hundred and fifteen acres. That's one question. If, if you expand further and went down the, the mesa, you know, further to the southwest. And go to three hundred or four hundred homes, that may be a different question. So capacity for one may not be capacity for the other. Um but the, again, lowering the risk of, of finding sufficient water, water quality. Um I, I assume that things like arsenic can be removed from water, but there's a cost to that. And so those are the kind of things that, that if, if we get really serious, I know at one point the discussion was if somebody presents a tentative plat, then I can do the analysis. Um if we're just, you know, ball parking and saying two hundred homes. Where they're at uphill downhill, those all affect water delivery ability. And so um with that, those are the kind of questions that cat, they don't need our help to do that stuff. They would need to know kind of what we're actually looking at. Is that a fair statement, Reed?
Yeah, we, we kind of need to move forward in lockstep and generate evolution.
And that is, that is the plan, you know, uh Fred just recently reached out to us. Wondering what's going on because we, we sat with him several months ago and had this discussion and. He actually reached out to us. I was waiting to get something going to be able to share with him. And uh he beat us to the punch and now we told him that we were having these work sessions and everything that we'd probably be getting back with him and. Kind of giving them an update on what we're planning to do.
So the reason we're addressing this in this discussion fairly early on is that um. So the Tyler Farms experience was kind of like reading a really good novel. There were plot twists and surprises and things came up halfway in or. And then we thought we had resolved and turned out we didn't have resolved and it was, it was a. It was an emotionally difficult ride. It was a time consuming ride that ended poorly. It's like a, a novel with a bad ending. Um what we're trying to do is take as much of those plot twists and much of that, that, you know, uh surprise. Out of this, this uh process we're, we're talking about beginning here. So as a result, um I think we tried to outline for you the real risks uh associated with water development. Um the real possibilities. Um and, and to tell you at this point, we don't have. Solid, concrete answers for you. It's not like we're doing infill in the town of Cliff and we just plug into their, their water main. Um but having said that, it's something that we want to. I, I, I want to put in front of this board as much upfront as we can. Ask the right questions, get as many of the right answers upfront. So we don't, you know, repeat the, the Tyler Farms experience, which was difficult for all of us. Um we at one point thought we had found. The answer and solution to everything. And it looked that way. It turned out to be a mirage, but it was a really good looking mirage at the beginning. Still, uh as you drive by and you think about those wells, you still kind of say, dang it, I wish we could do it. Um but that's what we found. Um. The next area we need to think about is evaluating private developer risks. And, and private market risk. So we commissioned along with uh the southeastern Arizona government's uh organization, CGO. To do a housing study of Greenlee County. This is about six or seven years old. Um I'm gonna take probably a sixty, seventy page document, sit it down to a couple of sentences. Their, their finding was that the further away you get from the mining operation, the lower your demand goes. So if you're in, in, say Franklin, at the very southern part of our inhabited area of the county. You're about the same time and distance as you are from Safford, from the Marinti Mine. What Franklin doesn't have is a Walmart and multiple restaurants and so forth. And so. Not, not um surprisingly, demand moves down the further south you get. That doesn't mean demand goes away and we'll talk about that in just a second. The closer you get to the mining operation, it's more difficult to find pieces of land and it's more difficult to find water. So there's a piece of land that surrounds the, the uh. Building for the Church of Jesus Christ, that they say it's about twenty-eight acres. It has utilities, all utilities right there at the property line. So in terms of ease of development of infrastructure, it's got it. There's just less demand. Um. As you go up and, and you start looking around at the cliff in Marinti area, you'll go further south towards three-way. It's harder to find chunks of land. And then once you do find a chunk of land. It's hard to, to, to determine whether or not there's water available. And so that's the dynamic that that housing study pointed out. Um it is very helpful information for a developer, but it's not conclusive information. I think it directs them. To try and find, which is one of the reasons that Tyler. I think it directs them to try and find, which is one of the reasons that Tyler Farm again looked good, it was sort of that. Happy meeting where you're close enough to the mine, you're about twenty, twenty-five minutes from the gate. And you had, you had what appeared to be all utilities necessary for infrastructure. One of the most talked about bits of information on on gauging developer and and private market interest is the the Marinzi Housing Waiting List. Which I've heard figures from four hundred to a thousand, usually between eight hundred and thousand, the number we hear most frequently. Um. This is one data point, I would be very cautious about hanging our hat on this data point. For example, we've seen quite a few homes built on the fairgrounds, uh, not fairgrounds, Fairway Drive area, they're new homes. Uh, as near as I can tell, few, if any of those homes are are occupied by people who are on the waiting list, they were people who already in Marinzi Housing. Uh, but are no longer there. Um, and so who is on that waiting list? I I know I had a a son who's on the waiting list and it was his sort of safety net. Uh, they've now purchased a home and they're not on the wait, they may still be on the waiting list, I don't know if he withdrew his name or not. But that number is is hard, one of the things that makes it difficult to rely on. Is if Marinzi Housing were priced at its market value, probably in the neighborhood of fifteen to eighteen hundred dollars a month. Based on on some rental uh data I know from from the Safford area. If you were in that neighborhood, would that waitlist go down? If people were having to pay what the market price is, so that lower housing cost certainly attracts people to the waiting list. Are they in a position to put a down payment on a home? We don't know. Are they young employees who would really love to to subsidize their budget with a low rental uh fee? We don't know. Um, the other is that that proximity, if you're in Marinzi Housing, you're right there, you're minutes from from the gate, you're minutes from your job. Every mile you get further away from that, does demand go down, does it go up? If housing in Marinzi were at the market value, would that waitlist shrink? And would that create more demand for housing? I'm gonna sink sink eighteen hundred dollars into rent, I might as well build a house, we don't know. So I would be caution cautious, this is a data point, but it's not one that I think we should use to gauge private investor interest. But it is certainly one of them. Um. I took the time on my way up to the office this morning and and just drove. Um, I didn't go down towards Franklin, I'm aware of a couple of builds there, but I started at Franklin and stopped counting at three way. And just on the highway or down Fair Fairway. Um, there are forty, at least forty-five new homes, some are are manufactured, some are site built. Um, and those have been in the last three, maybe five years, so forty-five homes south of three way. That a- and then we know there's been some development in the Verde, La Malinda area, there's some new homes going in there, there's some tiny homes, there's some other. Uh, apartments and stuff going in and around the Clifton area, there's some infill in the Clifton area. Um, what does that tell us? One, that there is some demand for homes, there clearly is, and it seems like every time somebody scrapes off a housing pad. Within a couple of months, there's a house going up on it. Um, whether that forty-five or maybe closer to seventy-five or a hundred homes in the last five years. Has that taken away from the demand for housing development? Or is that indicative that we haven't met the demand yet? My only response is I don't know. Uh, but there's a lot of activity for Greenie County, that is a tremendous amount of activity in the last fairly short period of time. Um, on on recently built or recently installed homes. Uh, there's a couple of homes that were essentially uninhabitable, that someone's gone in and refurbished. So they they act as though they're a new home, because they are a new home on the market that wasn't there before, there's been some investment in that. Um, but that's, that was just like, say, just driving up uh today, at least forty-five between three way and Franklin. That I'm aware of, there could well be more than that. Um. What are developers asking? So as we have met with developers, one in particular sipped it down. We were talking about what can we do to assist in engineering issues, transportation issues, he was less concerned about that, what he wanted to know is. Who's gonna buy, what's the demand? And he also wanted to know at what price? Am I building homes for people who are earning, say, sixty-five to a hundred thousand dollars a year? I'll build one kind of home. Am I building for people who make a hundred to a hundred and fifty thousand, maybe a dual income home? I'll build a different kind of home, different lot size, different, you know, floor print size and so forth, so they've been asking. Essentially the same question, what is the market? Um, and and we've we've given the same data that I just regurgitated to you and and. And said, you know, this is this is what we've got. Um. To some degree, that data doesn't exist, because you you can't go in and say, if a home are available today, would you buy it? If so, what price point? Some people may not know they're gonna buy a home till a month from now, six months from now, a year from now. Um, but that's the kind of question that developers have been asking us. Interestingly, one question that was asked, um, I remember it came up when we met about the housing study at the uh, the golf. Uh, club, you know, clubhouse there, is how soon is the mine gonna go to autonomous trucks? Which was an interesting question back then, it's become more interesting now. But even if they went to autonomous trucks, there's still a lot of people who are gonna be working up here in Marinzi. But that was a question that developers were asking, and I think what they're doing is trying to say, how much risk? Does my risk go up if if the mine starts using autonomous trucks, because there'll be fewer people to buy a home? It's a question they've asked. One of the key questions I think we ought to be thinking about is why hasn't the private market already stepped in and done this? Now, I don't have an answer, but it's something that that ought to be running in the back of our thought and say, if if it was so lucrative. Why hasn't developer come in? We know that some developers tried to acquire state land in the same area we're talking about. I don't know, and and perhaps Bryce Gomez does, I don't know why they abandoned that effort. It may have been something that occurred in another part of their business and caused them to not want to do the risk. It may have been they looked at it and said, we don't think we, I don't know why.
The local water companies couldn't give them worse on the water situation, the capacity.
It was water question, you're right.
Yeah.
And that they were owned by two different water companies back then, weren't they?
Right.
Yeah.
So shortly after that, it never went for auction, because those. One was an architect and one was a developer and they split, split the sheets. They were discouraged and moved on, but one of them is back in the picture, the architect.
So so one again, we, that that may be a good question, but it sounds like they were asking the same question we are, and that is water.
Yeah.
Um, and obviously you can't do water, you can't do houses. But but I think it's a question worth keeping in the back of our collective minds is. Why has the private market not stepped in to do this? Right now, there's, there's a, I think it's almost ten thousand home development out in the West Valley, out in the Buckeye area. And and they have done everything they can imagine to try and fudge that um, your hundred year water supply that our state requires for that. They they tried to include runoff water, they tried to include everything, and that housing development hasn't taken off. But the fact that they were asking for a ten thousand home development, they know what the market is, they know they can sell those homes. Their problem is the same question as water, and frankly, that's a question all up and down the state, water and how do you meet that demand? The other question that I think is instructive, it, there is no, but is if I had the money, would I risk it in this investment? And that's, that's individual question, and if so, why would you do it? And if not, why would you not do it? Because that sort of forces our thinking into the very same questions that a developer. None of us are developers, and so they would ask that question more sophisticated than we would. But the question's instructive and say, okay, if if I were the one that had extra. Million dollars laying around with nothing to do, would I, would I put my money here? Would I put my money someplace else and why and why not? It's an instructive sort of introspective question that I think is worth asking.
Something else that should be mentioned is that, you know, we keep talking about people that are working up there. Well, we have people that are working up there that are only a couple now, because all their kids have gone up and, you know, and left. Or they're working for the mine and have their own home or whatever. But we have people that want to remain in this county because of our tax base and so on and so forth, that. Uh, and don't want the big huge home, you know, they just want a home for the wife and himself, and when the family comes and visits, they can entertain and. They go back home. I'll I'll tell you, there's a lot of people in that boat that are still working, because they don't know where they're gonna go. Where they're gonna go and have a house built. And and it it's always been the the norm to go over the hill and go into Graham County, well. Over in Graham County, you're paying sixty thousand dollars for a lot versus what. You know, they would be paying here, and so anyway, that's something that also needs to be considered.
It is, and 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 what you hit is exactly another point of of trying to gauge the market, because I I do believe there are a lot of people. Who would love to remain in the area if they could, um, it's where their roots are, they've gone back several generations. And and we have lots of people that relocate to Graham, relocate to the Tucson or Phoenix metros. Um, some have a good plan for when they retire and some don't. Um, but but and and we're seeing that pressure, that housing pressure in Graham County. It's for several reasons, one, their mind is developing over there and creating more demand. But they've also got, and 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 our our counterparts in Grand County give us, heck, every time their all text bill comes in. They pay over two million dollars a year for their um, you know, long-term care, we pay. Less than ten thousand pounds, and so they keep encouraging us to build a, uh, you know, an assisted living center or something. But but what it hits is that very topic you're talking about, Superintendents Gomez, and that is, where do people go when their career is over? And and there's no place for them to go right now, would they? Probably so, yes.
Sorry, I just, I just had a couple of points and I I you're hitting a bunch of, bunch of high notes, which is great. Uh, but you on on your fourth bullet, you know, what the developers, you know, have asked and and who would buy at what price? I think it's very indicative of what has been built so far, I mean, of the forty, forty-five homes that you counted. You know, there was a broad range of, you know, different style homes, some were, you know, some were larger, you know, for. Dual income families, et cetera, some were manufactured homes, so I really think that that we already kind of have that information, I think if you. If we had land available, there might be a mixture, um, you know, a mixture of those type of homes, you know. Being built, there are gonna be some that just don't wanna rent for in town, because they don't wanna be held, you know. To standards or whatever, they wanna have their own place, their own freedoms. Um, then there's other people that want extra, extra areas so that they can, you know, raise a family and and look out over a river, and I'm. Thinking of you, Austin, I mean, you you guys could have lived in town, but but you you chose to live out there. Um, one thing on the, on the, on the, your last bullet, you know, the. Why hasn't the private market already stepped in? I think it has to do with with passion or or the reason. That they're wanting to do this, right? We're not going into this thinking, how much money could we make? On on creating housing, we're trying to solve a problem. That that we all know is a problem, that there's limited amount of housing for all of these reasons that we've talked about. But I think a developer is probably looking at, how much money can I make? That's all they they care about. Um, and we have different reasons for going into that, so I just wanted to mention that. Um, I think that's, that's, I think that's just two key points in this whole thing that that is totally different. You know, for our aspirations of creating housing and a developer possibly, you know, creating housing.
Excellent points, and I'm glad you pointed that out, the, in addition to the the types of homes that we've seen, the the manufactured versus. You know, and and there's some, some really large, really nice, really expensive homes. Um, so there really is quite a spectrum, uh, in including in that spectrum, I think there is a market for multifamily housing. Where where people come in and they they um, they want to to sleep there for their seven days on and go back to where they come from for their seven days off. Um, so I I think you're right, that that there is a true mixed use or mixed market for housing in the area. And gauging that that interest is is what developers do. You are correct as well that a profit motive drives decisions differently than solving a a a problem, if you will, motives. Um, and we're gonna get into more of of, you know, what what it looks like if we move forward versus the private market and a little bit further the discussion. But you're absolutely right, uh, in in my mind, those are questions we should ask. The corollary to to key point number or uh, you know, point number five. Is how much of that private risk or how much of that risk of development? Is the county willing or should the county take in to a public entity? And and there, is there a right answer, wrong answer, there's not, but it's one of those questions we should be asking of ourselves is. If if the developer, for example, would say, I'm gonna lay out a million dollars and expect to make two. Um, that's one thing, if we lay out a million dollars, we don't expect to necessarily, we're not a for-profit entity. Um, and so. Taking in private risk into a public entity has its own sets of concerns. But it's, yeah, these are simply questions that that as I went through this, that we should be asking ourselves. So um, I appreciate that you you supplemented those. Before I move on, anything else on this slide? Let's talk about a couple of things, um, state land has has mentioned two things to us, and they they mentioned the first one, pre-zoning. Uh, a couple of times now, as we've talked to them, and basically what they're saying is you identify some land. And even before it's acquired, while it's still state land, we would pre-zone it for residential. Residential, single family, residential, multiple family, whatever the case may be, according to our planning and zoning. Why does that make sense for us? Well, on the one hand. Finding a zoning is is a tool for um, sort of controlling how land develops. So if we say it's gonna be single family homes, then you can't go in there and build a, you know, fifty apartment space apartment building. Um, we've had that discussion just recently in that same area about multiple family versus single family, but. From state lands' point of view, it adds value to an otherwise blank piece of canvas. Because. If if we just called out, say, a hundred and fifteen acres for whatever you want. Maybe a rancher in the area says, I'm gonna lock that up and use that for grazing. And so they purchase it at a relatively cheap price and they just expanded their ranch, but they never intend to build a house. Now. The other side, you can pre-zone, but you cannot force development, so let's say we go down this track and. The rancher person purchases it, or even a developer who says, I I'd like to develop land, but for whatever reason doesn't able to do it. We cannot tell the developer, you must build houses, you must build it by some date certain, or we take it over. Once it goes to auction, whoever wins that auction owns that land. But pre-zoning from the state land point of view adds value, so maybe the landfill is worth nine hundred an acre. Maybe if this is pre-zoned, it's now worth three thousand an acre, just pulling those numbers out of the air. Um, but pre-zoning is basically, we look at it even before the sale is consummated and say. We're saying that the highest and best use for this new piece of land that comes on the market is, whatever we call it, out to be. Infrastructure plan, we're a little bit more fuzzy on. Uh, I'm gonna defer to Reed and see if you can fill in some of the the blanks on this, what an infrastructure plan would be about. Do we know?
Yeah, with uh, one of the other would be a, put an informal pre-plan. Show your. Hold a lot of the out in your streets.
It shows the roads.
Yeah.
So one thing that we're very comfortable with, for example, is chip sealed roads, that that has been a very good investment for the county. That our traffic is not such that they wear out, in fact, most of our chip sealed roads around the county are in very, very good shape. We maintain them on a schedule, and so that that works for us. You do the same thing in Pinal County, they're gonna require paved roads and gutters and sidewalks and so forth. Again, from our point of view, it makes it more likely to end up in the housing area that we'd like it to be. From state lands' point of view, again, it adds value, their job is to maximize the return on state land. So if they auction it, the more we can do to add value, the more likely their appraisal, minimum appraisal per acre goes up. It probably is not cost prohibitive, because like you say, we're not paying sixty thousand a lot. You know, we're we're maybe moving up into the three or four thousand dollars an acre, that's still um, dirt cheap compared to just about anywhere. But that's why, as near as we can tell, why state land would like some of this pre-development decision making to take place. So that adds value to them, and for our point of view, it adds value that it more likely turns into housing than something else. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Anybody else, any questions, Ron or or Will?
No, not yet.
Nope, none for me.
We just covered that, why is uh Arizona State Land interested in that? Um. So let's suppose i- in in an ideal world, I think, is we go through this process. And we get to auction and somebody from the private market says, I I can make money at this, this is a good deal, and they step in and buy the land. And they begin to develop, that would be ideal, because at that point, we can then step back to the role that we were designed for. And that is regulatory, planning and. And that is regulatory, planning and zoning, building permits, those kind of things. Um and and we are very well constructed as a county government to do those kind of regulatory oversight functions. One of the things we we should consider, as we talked about the copper cycle and other other risks, is the private market get in and buy it. And for like like our friends who tried before, they get to a point, they say. We can't build right now. And again, we cannot affirmatively tell that new owner of land. You shall build so many houses by such and such a date. My suspicion is that if a private uh entity steps up to purchase at the day of auction. They're not going to do it without a plan to move forward. So I think in in many respects, that's the best of all worlds. We tee this up and somebody comes in and says, I want to take it and run with it. Um county purchase. One of the questions we should ask ourselves is under what conditions would we do this? Um I'm going to have both Reed and and Gary talk a little bit about what. What it means if it falls into county hands and does that make it easier or more difficult to develop? But again, trying to avoid the novel type experience, you know, experience we have at Tyler Farms. I would encourage the board to be thinking at this stage, under what conditions would we step in and 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 buy at auction? Would we outbid a private bidder? Would it would we um you know, would we uh buy it if we're the only bidder? And and what are those conditions that would lead to that decision, one way or the other? Um the more we can take risk out of it, the more we define the risk. The easier that makes it for this board to make a decision, but it also makes it easier for the private market. So so some of what we're doing. I I don't, for example, see Maricopa County ever considering doing what we're doing. And that is engaging in state land to buy new housing. Why? They've got housing going all over the place. They got place and they they sometimes have water. But there's no need for the county to step in where the private market is just flourishing and and beating down the door to build more. There's a piece of legislation in front of uh legislature right now. That would allow agriculture land in Pinal County to be converted to housing. And it's on that same premise that it uses about a fifth or a fourth of the water that agriculture does. And it begins to free up CAP water for housing use. That is the trend right now. Move agriculture to housing. Uh or other urban uh uses, which has much lower water usage. But we should be asking ourselves, under what conditions would we step up and and purchase? I'm going to let Reed and Gary or whoever knows more about it than I do, talk about the advantages of lot splitting. Our subdividing, the pros and cons. So with that, Reed?
I've got a couple of slides on this, but I I'm going to, I'm going to tell you a quick story to illustrate the difference between. Lot splitting, subdividing. Austin's going to help me if he can steal the screen from Derek.
I will, um I'll give it to him.
This is a story about developer Joe and farmer John. Developer Joe bought this field right here from Farmer John. Once we're put his improvement plan and his approval, then the jurisdiction told him. We don't like that you're only going to have one entrance into your subdivision. We want a second entrance. So developer Joe went to farmer John and said, hey, I need you to sell me uh. Or I need you to give me this corridor up up right here out to this road up there, so that I can have a second entrance to my subdivision. And farmer John said, yeah, developer Joe, I'll sell you land for a road. And developer Joe said, no, 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 no. You're going to give me land for a road. And the reason you are is because I'm going to pave a road down the middle of your field. And I'm going to run utilities down that road and I'm going to stub those utilities up to the right away. And I'm going to set you up. And the light bulbs went on and farmer John might and said, you've got a deal. He gave him. Land for a a road, a corridor for a real driveway. And Austin's going to fast, uh just work his way through the timeline. So developer Joe starts building houses. You can see him starting to build out his subdivision here, a little bit more. Uh his subdivision is almost fully built out. And at this point, farmer John has sold some lots. So you've got a couple of houses going. And then if you go forward in time, it it initially all of this built out. Um but that farmer John. Came to me and said, I want to subdivide this. And I said, no, you don't. He said, yeah, I really do. I said, no, you don't. And he said, yeah, I really, I want to do the right thing. I said, okay, we'll take your money and we'll uh we'll do some of it. And we did. And at the end of that process, farmer John was frustrated by how long it took. And the the hassle of dealing with ADQ and the Department of Real Estate and getting a public report. And the costs involved in it. And so that that little anecdote there just kind of illustrates the difference between lot splitting and subdividing. And that's something that you as a board, depending on your involvement in this moving forward. We'll have to grab the whip and decide on so. And that so now we'll switch back to Derek if you will, real quick. And there's a, I've got some pros and cons for uh. Lot splitting or or kind of a derogatory term for it is wildcatting. We also call it minor land division. All of them come to not have a formal minor land division process in place right now. I'm about Derek to go to the next slide.
Maybe.
So lots split, the pro, you've already some subdivisions, you don't need to issue a public report. Some of your stations, including ours, you don't even really need to do a survey. Um and and you move very fast. The cons over on the right. It's hard to get any kind of density or multiple lots. You're not adequately um dying for. End of the third row that aren't maintained. Utility to a house. We'll move to the next slide there.
Let me, before we move to the next slide, we we've seen this occur in Greenlee County. We've got one of the places I drove down and looked at at homes. The last time I was down that road, it's in in the York area, there were, I think, three homes on this area. There are now ten. A couple are site-built, most are manufactured. We have already received requests that the county take over the road. We've we've heard complaints about the nature of the road. It goes through a wash. And and so we we've seen this. It's not always a bad experience. And and in this case, the the neighborhood I was in isn't isn't necessarily a bad experience. But over time, what happens often is the county receives more and more pressure to take over roads first. But in some cases, also to step in and solve things like utility infrastructure and and other things. It is sort of by everywhere, uh because there may or may not be a survey. You you can end up with uh, you know. Line disputes, those kind of things. And unfortunately, um it is not uncommon. In fact, I was visiting with Dustin Welker. He he they're they're really tired of this lot splitting approach because invariably the county starts getting pressured to solve that list of cons. And and it doesn't happen in the first year or two. It happens in five, six, ten years um down the road. When this thing is is kind of fully built out and the problems begin to manifest. You first move in, you're giddy about your home, everything's fine, and then the the problems begin to surface. And there is no. There's no way to really resolve some of those concerns that began five, ten, fifteen years ago. Is that a fair statement? I know uh there's there's one um. One of these Wildcats, if you will, that I'm aware of. Because a relative of mine lives on it, in it. And and when they first built, the road was was put in, it was a nice gravel compacted road. Two years later, there are large potholes and problems. There's a, there's a good um almost six inch. You know, elevation change from the paved part to where it drops off into this private road. And no one, because they don't, any of them own the whole road. Nobody's compelled to fix the road. So it's getting worse and worse and worse. And I I suspect they're probably within five years of going to the county and say, please pave our road. Um which the county should say, we are not. In fact, Graham County has adopted a practice where. Private roads get red signs on them, say, this is, you know, ABC Drive and it's a red sign. And county or public roads get green signs. And so in the county's mind, that should solve the problem. It doesn't. I don't think most people know the difference. Southern, we've got a cool red sign and they got an ugly green.
It is helpful because when somebody calls the county, they'll tell them, go look at your road sign. If it's red, it's not our road. And we're not going to come out anything. So it makes for a shorter conversation when people call and bust their throat.
Which is a practice we we may want to incorporate in our our community as well. So any event. But but we've seen this play out in real time in Greenlee County.
Yeah, because there's some folks here in Greenlee County that they think that just because there's a road there, we're responsible to maintain it. You know, until you get into a lengthy conversation with them about, you know, this is private, doesn't belong to the county, blah, blah, blah. You know, but that's good. That's that's a good approach on the signage. It'd be very helpful. Because I've had several conversations about that and heard a game.
It gets worse when uh a concept called courtesy maintenance comes into play where we had a blade on the road for sixty years. And and invariably what you get is, well, you're doing his road, why not mine? And and we can explain that in the details, but to the person who never comes and asks and wants to sit through an hour-long conversation. All they see is inequity. I'm being mistreated, they're being well-treated. It it's simply, you know, it it doesn't, it doesn't change the fact that we're going to say no. But it it does add pressure down the road a bit.
So this is what we done and because of pros of subdividing are the cons of lots with um. But subdividing is it's it's a more methodical uh proper way to develop. For for residential development. And I would just point out, the cons have to do with money and time. It's very, very expensive to subdivide relative to doing a lot split. And the developer incurred a lot of cost at the beginning of time. And he doesn't recoup those costs until the end when he starts to fill a lot. And then it's just slow because you're dealing with uh even in Greenlee County where where we have a. In my mind, a friendly jurisdiction. And we're not real sophisticated, but they're still going to deal with ADP, for example.
And Department of Real Estate, right?
Uh huh, for the public report, yeah.
Hey, I had a question real quick. Do with now, when does that have to be decided now? Like if we were to rezone, which we talked about a little earlier. We don't have to, if we were, you know, rezone that area for housing. We don't have to determine how it's going to be, you know, how the homes are going to be built, if it's going to be subdividing or 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 not. Right?
Correct, right.
Okay. Yeah, so we could still do the rezoning portion of it and then. Figure this stuff out, you know, I think, I think in the grand plan.
Let let me add as well to the list of pros and cons. Um. First of all, these rules for subdividing and lot splitting. Apply equally to Greenlee County or a government entity as they do for the private sector. In other words, we don't get a pass because we're a government entity. The the this Department of Real Estate is going to look at it the very same way. One of those things that that. That lot splitting is not built to do is build a large place with a hundred or three hundred homes. Because one of the premises is you you start out with a lot and you can sell off four and keep one for yourself. Now, if it's if it's a very large area where every lot left and read correctly if I'm wrong, but if they're all thirty-six acres or larger. Then that rule doesn't apply. But if you take a, you say the ten acres around um to the north or. Northeast and southwest of the park, roughly ten acres apiece. If we or a private developer wants to come in and do that, they can only split that into a total of five lots and keep one. What you can't do is say, all right, I'm going to keep one and then my brother-in-law and my brother and my sister, you're all going to buy one, kind of, but not really. And then you're going to split it again to your niece and your nephew and your kids and their best friend, kind of, but not really. That's happened in Greenlee County before as well. The Department of Really, Real Estate stepped in and said, you're going to undo all those sales because you're acting in concert. You you can't do that kind. It has to be a true arms-length sale to the next person in line. And so ten acres becomes two and a half acres becomes half acres. But you can't, you can't coordinate that. There's there's a very instructive case out of uh Yabapai County that described that very thing. There were shell companies that owned by relatives. And and by the time the paper trail was reassembled, it was very clear what was going on. And they got not only told to this, this course themselves of land, but they got hit with huge fines. Those laws apply to Greenlee County every bit as much they apply to the private, private citizen. So if we're talking about a hundred, two hundred, three hundred homes. Lot splitting is is not a good way to do it. And you can run afoul of, and who complains? It could be the developer who wanted to bid and didn't get the land. It could be, you know, somebody in the neighborhood who says, I don't want an extra hundred neighbors. And they could complain, anyone can complain to the Department of Real Estate. Down in the Duncan area, that land around the church, that happened at one point and and Department of Real Estate stepped in and. And it is still vacant. It could have been done as a subdivision. They tried to do it in a in a sort of a. Four-man subdivision, lot splitting. Anyway, sorry if that added more to the conversation you intended to read.
Oh, that's great. Uh um and this is this, this guy, this is a. Paid it now, but he wrote a really neat article about lots versus subdivision. And that's that's just a white paper that gets down into the week. The pros and cons, mostly the cons of lots. I think there's one more. So our subdivision ordinance is really old. It's almost fifty years old. These are the purposes, as stated in that ordinance. I'm not sure that it will build all of these, but. What I'll point out to you is that, and I didn't know this until I was reading our ordinance recently, our ordinance does not require paved roads. And I would hazard a guess that we are probably the only county in the state of Arizona. And possibly in the in the nation that doesn't require paved road in the subdivision. And that's something that we probably ought to address.
Could we, could we in the process of approving a single subdivision say, and you're going to also put in paved roads of some kind?
We could. And if I was a developer, I'd argue, well, your ordinance says I don't have to. And and so I don't know how that would end up legally, but.
So does the ordinance say you don't have to, or does the ordinance just not say you have to?
It it requires that it calls it a uh. Uh a an improved all-weather surface. And and so I call that A A B or gravel road. Some people. Call it just a gravel road.
Some people would call it asphalt. It just matters who you're asking, right? Improved roads, or how how was it worded?
Uh an improved all-weather surface.
Matter to who you're asking.
Well, no, but our ordinance says that a gravel or A B, an unpaid surface can be considered an all-weather surface. So and when you talk about the expense of subdividing, the big expense of all those expensive expenses is the. So you could look at that in a good way or a bad way. Come to Greenlee County because. You can subdivide in Greenlee County. You don't have to pay for expensive asphalt. But keep in mind. In subdividing, those corridors, those rights of way and the infrastructure on them, including that road, get dedicated to the county. Uh when the final plat is recorded. And then David News inherits those roads, whether they're asphalt or gravel or, you know. Deep moss out of your garden. Maintain them from there into perpetuity.
Which the other downside is you end up, um we've got a couple of areas in the county where just the makeup of the dirt that the road is on creates dust. Like like you're in a powdered figure factory. And 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 you put several hundred homes in an area and everybody's driving over, especially during shift change. You can expect to see a haze of dust over that entire subdivision. You know, if that's the case.
Or a mud hole during precipitation.
Or mud hole. It it's a cost benefit uh approach to to solving the problem.
I'm ready for the next slide if that's what I think it is. So there's this disparity between lot splits and subdividing. And there's big, big, big issues with both. And we kind of get on some of those. And those those issues and that that divide is so pronounced that Senator Griffin has introduced a bill. I don't know where this is out of the process. But she's trying to find common uh some middle ground between doing wildcatting and subdividing. And her proposal bill will allow you to adopt ordinances that will allow smaller subdivisions, sixty ten lots with reduced subdivision standards. Um, and then on the back end, when you prepare that public report, which is onerous and expensive to prepare. And the Department of Real Estate oversees that public report. Should this bill have provisions to to greatly simplify that public report so that the the buyer is still protected, but the developer has to have to occur all that expense. What I'd point out here is they're saying the lots have to be two acre or more in size. And in my mind, that's a deal killer for Greenlee County elites for what we're contemplating because a two acre lot is just in this case. But and and so who knows how long that'll take to get passed or if it even will pass. Well, I only throw that up there to illustrate that that there's this chasm between lots splitting and subdividing. Because they both have issue, big issue, especially.
That that bill right now, it is assigned to Representative Griffith's committee, but it has not had a hearing in her own committee. So she's she's got two weeks to get it on an agenda. I will tell you this, she is the most creative. She's come up with this. She's a real estate agent who lives in um uh Cochise County. And she's come up with all kinds of different creative solutions to solve problems that she sees in her own community and and in Cochise County. They have not been met favorably, generally speaking, in the in the legislature. She's run anywhere from one to ten of these types of bills for the last uh three or four years, and none of them made it out of the legislature. So I think this is an attempt, it clearly recognizes the problem that there needs to be some sort of middle ground. Whether this one gets the traction to to get out, we don't know. Or whether it gets substantially amended and and doesn't look like this anymore. We'll see.
And I think that's it for me there.
So sort of to put a bow on this. As we move through this process, as we, you know, get to the point, and and for me, the point of final decision is, do we buy or do we not? There are some decisions in in the route. Let's say we're going down this track. And cactus comes out and says, you know, we've looked at it and there's just no way we can supply water. Do I think that'll happen? I don't. But let's say if they did. We need to say, okay, there's no water. Or our hydrogeologist, you know, somehow we figure out how to drill two or three test wells and and he says, you know what, I, there's not as much water as I thought there was. At that point, the board needs to say, is this our off ramp? Do we get out of this this process? If we um and we've already committed, we've already started making some contacts, if we go out and beat the bushes and nobody steps up, there's not a single developer out there that wants to take this risk. At that point, do we say maybe we should pull out? That's a question we should ask. And so this is a fluid process, but there are some clear decision points as the process goes along that we should be considering. They can run on on dual or triple tracks. But but some of these could be deal killers. In the entire farms was killed by water. Um, there was nothing else that, I mean, if if but for water, perfect location, perfect everything. But as we go along this, we need to know we've hit a a a decision point that makes this unviable. And and be able to pull out earlier in the process or rather than, you know, going further down the road. Um, but the big decision point will come, assuming everything is still okay. We get to auction day roughly two years from now. And at that point, we would have to know before that auction begins, literally on the courthouse steps over here in front of the old courthouse. Do we bid at all? How much do we bid? Do we try to outbid the private market? Um, and and going into that decision are things like, if we acquire the land, what can we do with it? Because on top of the subdividing versus lot splitting decision, there's also a process that has, you have to have a second option of some kind to get property out of the government's hands. It's got to go for at least ninety percent of its prized value. And that's true whether we're selling it by the lot or selling it by a forty acre parcel. And so we add a layer of process to that that, so let's say we buy it at auction and then a year or so later, the developer says, hey, I'd like to do it. We can't just sell it to that developer. We've got to set up our own auction process and say, show up on such and such a day and I hope you win. Um, but but that's that's an added layer of bureaucracy, if you will, that we bring to the mix that the private market doesn't. So I I would ask, I would beg this board to be thinking about that final decision point before we get there. Land banking, Supervisor Campbell already brought it up. Um, do we, do we attempt if if the private market is not there to develop it now? Do we get to the auction day and say, let's let's put this in our bank? Um, and hopefully the market changes and so that we can go through this process and in in a year or two, do we then uh make that purchase? I think at the time of auction, if if the board is generally speaking, willing to make the purchase and land bank, then we better have an answer to the lot splitting versus subdividing question. Do we want to step into the market and become subdividers? And put up the million dollars or whatever. I mean, I just making up numbers, but do we want to put up the the substantial amount of infrastructure commitment to turn this into housing? Um, and and at that point, we have then completely taken in what is normally private risk, private market risk, and we've public, we've taken into the public entity. Um, at that point, if we subdivided and put in the roads and the pipes and the electric and nobody buys, our taxpayers have bought that and and we're using their money to do that. Can it be done? It can. You've heard me say this a bunch of times. We were not built to build homes. Um, there's some things we're very well built for. And I say we, not just Greenlee County, government as a whole. The best example that I can think of off the top of my head was that that used to be a Sheridan, I'm not sure who owns it now, but that wonderful hotel right across the street from Phoenix Convention Center with the rotating restaurant on top. Um, City of Phoenix purchased that. By the time they finally got out of it, nearly twenty years later, they lost over a hundred million dollars on that purchase. That was a hundred million dollars of City of Phoenix taxpayers' money. And so that's that's a great question. We should be asking ourselves, if if we end up with land, what do we do with it? Do you have to answer that now? You don't. But I would strongly recommend that you have an answer to that by the time we are deciding whether or not to purchase the land at auction. Like I said, we will be working, Supervisor Goldman has beat the bushes like nobody I know to go find developers who have an interest, that have expressed interest, that have the know how. But if we find ourselves in auction day and we're the only ones at the courthouse steps, we need to know what the answer to that question is. There's also something I, Gary put it out there and I well described, and that's the fallacy of sunk cost. So at some point, you say, well, I got five dollars and I got ten dollars in. I'm a thousand dollars in. I might as well throw an extra thousand dollars in and buy whatever it is I'm going to do because I already spent a thousand dollars. As opposed to saying, you know what, better to walk away with my thousand dollars that I've spent and not sink another thousand into it. It's harder the further you go down that road and you've spent between thirty and fifty or more thousand dollars to get this teed up for auction. It's harder psychologically, it's harder um to say, we're just going to walk away from that the best that we did because we don't see a path forward. And the temptation might be to say, well, because we've spent money, we're going to spend more. I would caution against that way. I think each each step of this process ought to have its own cost benefit decision analysis. It doesn't have to be this thorough of a vetting, but we ought, in your own minds individually and as a board collectively, say, when we reach this point, we pull out. When we reach the next point, we pull out or we keep going. And then when we hit that big day, the auction day, we go all in or we pull out. Those are the kinds of questions that need to be asked upfront so that when that day comes, we're not, you know, wringing our hands and deciding what to do. I'm going to have Gary talk a little bit about uh housing authority. That is a tool that exists out there. We poked around the edges of it a couple of years ago. Um, I asked Gary to look at the statutes and kind of inform the board on what a housing authority is, what it does and so forth.
So basically the statutes uh allow counties to put together a housing authority uh by resolution. Um, they appoint commissioners. Those commissioners have staggered terms. Um, and basically what you're doing is delegating your authority. So the board has the authority to develop land. It's just one of the innate authorities you have, but you can delegate that authority to a housing authority. Um. Again, the limitations, and he talks about this, is when you sell lots, you got to sell them at auction. So like, uh, and then it's going to be this, so housing authorities are generally geared toward low income housing. The idea is that, and we talked about how sometimes the market doesn't want to build certain sorts of projects, particularly uh low income housing, the market sometimes doesn't get those built because there's not a lot of money being made in those sort of projects. And so uh housing authorities are often geared toward that idea of creating like uh rental units that the county through their housing authority creates those rental units and 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 rents those out. Under a housing authority, you have the the authority to uh to do bonds. You can you can actually sell bonds and then through the rents through your housing projects, you pay the bonds off. So those are, those are options and flexibility that you can do in that regard. It's not, and 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 also the housing authority has the power of eminent domain. I mean, we're not dealing with that here. Yeah. And you, I don't think you can, I don't think against the government, as I said, you can do eminent domain, but you can't against private properties if you had to. Uh, so a housing authority would have uh have that sort of authority. So there's there's some flexibility. Generally, again, it is geared toward low income housing, but it does allow in the statute, there's flexibility allowing that if uh either the board or the uh housing authority decides that it's in the pu- public interest to have mixed housing, then you can do that. So you can have mixed income with the higher income, lower income, and kind of in the same project. So you're allowed to do that. Uh, but generally, it's it's a tool. Again, the financial tool of having bonds is part of that. So you can do that uh and pay it back with with rents or things like that. Not sure it's the best way to to do a subdivision to that process because because again, it's it's more geared toward building rental projects and things like that. But uh but I do think that the law is written flexibly enough that you can kind of use it as a tool if you want to and kind of do different sorts of projects.
One of the 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 advantages of the established one is essentially you take this type of a process we're in today, you can push it over into your housing authority. If you establish a housing authority, give it a budget, allow that authority to hire an engineer, attorney, whatever they need to do. And and a lot of these have those positions in them. They really do take on a life of their own and they can, they can manage a lot of these decision making processes that are are, so it it makes it a little less clunky than doing it in front of the board supervisors. They are using delegated authority that you already have. But if you, if you set up an entirely different entity and you don't staff it, then you're you're looking at the same people who will be doing it over there with a board that you appoint as opposed to doing it here in front of you. If you staff it, there would be a commitment for a number of years um to give it the personnel and resources it needs to do what what, you know, we'd like it to do. We are familiar with a couple of housing authorities. They were used in the Dona Ania uh county developments that we toured a couple of years ago. They worked in conjunction with them. Um, interesting, our employee at the time was not high on housing authorities. She thought they were not helpful. Yuma County also has an active housing authority. The dynamics in those communities are much different than ours. You've got two agricultural based communities whose workforce will never be paid a whole lot of money. And so you've got a lot of dairies and pecan farms in the Dona Ania area. Um, Yuma, of course, high agriculture concentration, um, the salad basket of America. And so some of the dynamics there are different. Here we have a a workforce that if you you have to kind of work hard not to be able to get a job i- in mining. It it happens, there are people who don't work there. But our income per capita may be the highest in the state, if not the highest, one of the highest. And simply because there's work and and the mine is constantly looking for particularly skilled labor positions, welders and instrumentation of those types. Um, so the dynamics are a bit different. Could this give us some advantages? A a big maybe. But probably it would not give us advantages unless the board is willing to commit a fair amount of of dollar resources to make it work. But it is a tool that's available out there and it and it could could move a little bit more nimbly than the board board does. Um, but not a lot. And like I say, it was the original establishment, as I recall, correct me if I'm wrong, but you had uh inner city stuff where where
Like urban redevelopment.
Yeah, urban redevelopment, you know, vacant warehouses, um, and and so that the town could come in and buy up these properties, condemn them, buy them, and put up an apartment complex for low income housing. That was why, how they were designed and engineered initially. There is flexibility to adapt them, but that's kind of how they were envisioned. And we've lost Supervisor Campbell. I don't know if he's coming back. Uh, we're nearing this anyway. Yep, he acknowledged he dropped. I was going to get tired of listening to Derek. I'm not coming back. Yep, he says he's coming back. Internet access in D C, the problem, not us. Sure. But is it one o'clock, going to be one o'clock over there? Are they only two hours still ahead or?
I think they're three.
They're they're two, two early March. Yeah. Yeah, I think, yeah. I was probably hungry, not too much.
Good places to choose from.
There's all a lot of talk about ending daylight savings and we would never spring forward again. In fact, nationally, there's been a whole lot of orders written that we're not doing daylight savings. They spring forward. Yes, Ron. What's that? We are just about done with the discussion. Would you like me to just put you on speakerphone and and we'll wrap up this discussion? Okay. Yes. Okay. I will put you on speakerphone and then if you're able to access it, we will see you pop up on our screen. Okay. All right. We'll continue this way and Supervisor Campbell, if if you have something to say, please break in, butt in and and we'll go right to you.
I want, I want to point out that it's not an all or nothing thing. I want to point out that it's not an all or nothing thing. Once, once, uh, say, say the county ends up. The only bidder at auction, you get two hundred acres. You, you don't have to do one or the other. You can like sell thirty-six acres to, to developer and they can subdivide that. Subdivide that. You could also do a, have a public housing authority that creates apartments that are low income housing and have them run that. You can do a lot of. Just have to follow all the rules that are involved. So like if it's thirty-six acres or more, it doesn't count as a lot split. And you know, if you want to do a lot. But you are bound by the subdivision rules and lot split rules and things like that. So you gotta follow those rules. But if you get a big piece of property, you still have flexibility. But then again, what, what we're talking about, the sunk cost fallacy, you got, whenever you decide this is too much. You gotta be willing to cut and, and just cut your losses. Walk away. So, but, uh, but you can see that costs going up to the point of the auction are relatively low. Um, at the auction, they become very high and then at the subdividing stage. Extremely high.
Extremely high. So, um, I, I don't know, as we've gone through this, I, we've tried to vet and think about the things as many as we could. I want to make it very, very clear. These are policy decisions that belong to the board collectively. You three decide these important questions. What I did not want you to do is to not have as much information as we could assemble for you at this point. Before you make that policy decision and say, let's, let's go this direction. Let's go this direction. Let's, let's get a hundred. Let's get ten. Let's get four hundred, five hundred. Whatever the case may be. We wanted to make it clear. We may have Ron back. He's coming in. All right, he's good. I may hang up on this, Ron.
All right, sounds good. Sorry about that. And if you don't mind me jumping in really quick, and, and just, just based on what you had just said and what I wanted to say before. Is that, is that I truly appreciate, I'm sure that the, the, the other two. As well as we appreciate you bringing up all of these, these possible issues, right? I mean, as dumb politicians, we think about, you know, hey, we just want the end game, right? We just want, hey, we want housing. We want to get the land, all that stuff and. And there are consequences to some of that, you know, some of those actions. And so, uh, I just appreciate. All of the detail and, and all of the what ifs, um, that you guys bring up collectively. You guys are much, much brighter. Than I, I'll speak for myself than I, um. When, when thinking about all of the things that go into, hey, let's just get houses built. So. I just wanted to say thank you really for all your participation and your collective info. To us to help us protect ourselves and help us protect the county by making the right decision when we need to make that decision. So that's all I wanted to say.
If you might roll very much as like when I was in private practice. Um, my job was to keep, get my client fully informed so that they can make a fully informed wise, uh. Fully informed decision. Whether they made a good decision or not was the client's choice. Um, whether they took a plea agreement or whether they entered into a contract or whether they engaged in litigation. My, my objective, my duty, if you will, was to make sure that that decision was informed, well-informed. And that's where I see our duty now. If, if at the end of this, we have a decision action item. Do you say? Go buy the land, go build the houses and start putting up for sale signs in them. We'll figure out a way to do that. I don't know how right now, but if that's the board's policy decision, then our duty as your staff is to implement that decision. I see it at this point, you could say, go forward and purchase. Whatever you decide. Or, or start that process. You could say, you know what? We're done with all of this and walk away from it. Or you could say. Let's learn a little bit more. Let, let's, let's see how much of this we can define. We have a meeting tomorrow morning with a hydrogeologist. Maybe that helps us. There have been several points in this discussion where the best answer we can give you now is we don't know or maybe. Some of those would clear up with more day, data. Some of those like risk is always going to be a bit of. How much risk are you willing to take? Um, if you're risk averse, we may already be too far for you. If you're risk positive. Then you may say, let's go down and play this game a little bit further and see what happens. Those are the, the heavy-hitting policy decisions that you alone can make. We will not take them away from you. But we did not want to start. Without having a very thorough discussion of where we at B C, the pitfalls, the risk and the possible rewards. Um, and so, um, we will not substitute our judgment for yours. These are your calls. But we will at every point, even if you say go buy and build houses, we will alert you if we run into problems. I would like to not make this like a good suspense novel. I'd rather take as much of the sweating upfront. Less of it during the process. It would also be nice that when we realize, hey, we're at an end here, that we say stop. Wherever that point may come. Whether that's water, whether that's, uh, private investment or whatever the case may be. In order to do that, I felt like we needed to really plow the, the field pretty deep today to get started with. That's all I've got. If there's other questions or issues or considerations that you have, um, we are still in the work session. Um, and so it can be frequent and we'll do our best to answer any question you've thought of up to this point or any other concern or consideration you raised or thought about.
Go ahead, Mr. President.
I, I, I don't really have a question, but I, I have a comment that. I believe that we're taking the right approach, you know, sitting down and talking about all this because it needs to get done. You know, and, and, and made aware of everyone, you know, myself, Supervisor Byrne, Supervisor Campbell. So with that said, uh, the only question that I have before we go into the next item of business. You know, we're, there's a lot to digest here and what, what path do we really want to take? So. In, in item number thirteen, when we take action. Can, can we formally start the process, but also work? On some of these issues while we're starting the process?
Of course.
Okay.
Yes, you, you could say. Go get a hundred and fifteen acres or at least start that process. That will, that would be about a two thousand dollar commitment and, and probably a couple of weeks. You know, or, or a while before we can do that. Um, they, they are not linear. You don't have to solve one before you start the next. But like I say, as you start, um, it, it, two thousand dollars would be sort of like the ante to get into a poker game. That's what it costs to get started and then, then we go. That's a fairly easy process. It gets more complicated, more expensive as you go over time.
Because a lot of questions are gonna get answered from, from today. In two weeks, you know, cause there's gonna be phone calls that.
You bet.
I'm, I'm gonna be making and I'm gonna be meeting with some folks and stuff, so which I want to come back and share with. So, yeah, okay. I, I just wanted to be clear on that. I didn't wanna, I didn't wanna see that we were gonna table, uh, our. Last item of this agenda.
But, but the table or not is your choice. I mean, if you say as a board, the three of you say go forward, we'll start going forward. If the three of you or two of the three of you say. We're turning left or right or pausing, then we'll turn left or right or pause. That's, that's the board's call.
Uh, you know, cause I honestly believe, uh, uh, and I'm gonna, and I'm gonna put Supervisor Campbell on the stand. That he made the comment last meeting that if we don't start this process, it's never gonna get done. We'll be talking about this four years from now and say, gosh, we should have, we should have taken action and. And gone through with this to the point that whether we step aside or we go all the way through it. Okay. So I, I just want to make that point and, uh, so I'm good. I'm good. Go ahead, Reed.
Quick comment on the mechanics of the state land application. So you have to count and go online and draw a form, pay your two thousand dollars, non-revenue pool. But probably the stickiest part of that for us is that. They want at least a rough idea, legal description of the area that you're gonna chase. And in my mind, that's, that's probably the one data point.
That we need to.
That would stop us from doing it literally this afternoon.
I agree. Cause that's something else that we could go with. To state land with and. As a proposal that this is what we're actually looking at, based on the con- previous conversation we've had with him about. Rect- rectangular and, and here we are. You know, it's all over that area there and it would be nice to be able to have that to go and kind of have a conversation with them.
Yeah, if I, if, sorry, go ahead.
So you're with a hydrologist tomorrow then?
Yes. Go ahead, Ron.
Yeah, I was, that was my, uh, my question is, is how do we communicate? I, I mean, I, I definitely want to proceed forward. I do think that if we don't do it, nobody will. Uh, and, and I do want to continue to, to find, uh, that off-ramp if, if, if we're. Successful in, in getting private industry to come in and, and, and bid on this land. Once it comes to, once it, you know, once we get to that point. But as far as the formal, you know. You know, formal beginning of the process to purchase that state land, have we defined for sure what? What the ask is going to be. I know that Derek had mentioned his fancy word for that shape, uh, of land. Is that acceptable or, or do we have to follow other, you know? How, how, how do we, how do we, how do we tell them exactly what we're asking for?
And it sounds like that's one of the first questions we need to have defined.
Yeah.
That, that actually does become one of the, the big issues is. And, and I'll, I'll defer to read, but let's, I've, I've currently got the, um. Well, I have it up. Let's see what we get here. Moving back up our presentation. The hundred and fifteen acres that this blue outline. Reed, if we, if, if the board said, let's go pursue that hundred and fifteen acres. And a month from now, we say, hey, we found some partners. They'd like to see two hundred, three hundred acres. What's that?
Or the full five.
Or the five, six seventy-five or whatever it was. Can we change our application mid-process or do we start it over again with a new two thousand dollars?
You, you, you can't change it mid-process, but.
But before we submit it.
When you start, you pay your two grand and then they do some internal. Stuff where they. It floats around, they assign a, a project manager to it. They give it an application number. So there's some. There's some mechanics there that happen that takes them a few weeks, a few, several weeks, honestly. And during that time. We can change the area. And, and just communicate with our product, our state land project manager that, that we changed the area. But we do need some area to start with. And if you, if they elected to. Use a hundred and fifty acres, which by the way, there's a hole in that, a ten acre hole that we think out because you already own that ten acre parkage, but. But we could turn in an application based on the exhibit that you see on the wall. And while they're doing their paperwork on their side. The board could be fine that.
I, I would suggest that we go for the gusto and then cut it before we. If we need, if we finally decide after listening to the hydrologist. After even paying state land a visit based on, on our last conversation and what. We've interpreted from them that there is no, it's not necessary or, or you have to do it that way. And then, and then we cut it before we actually submit that application. That, that's my suggestion.
Before we, so. And, and when we were talking, the same thing, just labeled differently. To start the application. We, we could go in this afternoon, pay the two thousand dollars and, and get started. I think.
No, no, not, not, no, no, that's. Cause you can't go in the mid as Reed had mentioned, we can't pay the two thousand today and. And, uh, and say that we're gonna do that one hundred and twenty-five and then decide that we want to go after the five hundred. Right?
You can't, you can't do that in enough time. You can do it sooner than, you can't do it six months from now.
You can do it three.
Oh, there's a window there about submitting and paying the two thousand application fee?
Reed's alluding, we can do that three to four weeks from now to make that, change that.
Okay, well.
Right?
If that's the case.
That we could change it from a hundred and fifteen to, to six seventy-five, three to four weeks from now.
Or reverse, right? We could. We could ask for the six seventy-five and reduce it to the one fifteen.
That's what, that's the point I'm making is go for it, go and then reduce it if we're gonna, if we actually decide that we're gonna reduce it.
So getting back to the land banking issue, if you're gonna ask for the six seventy-five, you better have your ducks in a row. When you go to interact with state land.
Well, that's, okay.
You're gonna need a good plan. Tended to low it may be, but if you're just willy-nilly saying, we're gonna, we're gonna. Go grab all we can get. That's gonna fit their land banking definition and they're gonna fall back, in my mind.
Uh, I'm willy-nilly.
At this early stage, uh, Reed, from your perspective, is it, is it better to start big and pare it down? Or start small and grow it? I mean, cause, cause I think the sentiment that I'm hearing is that we don't know as we sit here today. Whether six seventy-five makes more sense or one fifteen makes more sense. From your perspective, is there one, a, a better starting point than the other?
Well, that, yeah, I have a bias. I'm, I'd ask you this.
Okay.
And, and, and if we can. So we're gonna get areas, you know, they don't want to leave orderments, like we talked about earlier. And so the six seventy-five can make sense to them. I, unlike some outfits, I think we've done a lot of work. As before and as we've interacted. With state land. Every time we talk to them on the phone, every time, some probably go missing with an email. In between those interactions, we're doing a ton of homework. And they see that, they recognize that. And I think that's gonna go, that's, that's gonna bode well for us. If they say, well, you think you're land banking, well, we're really not. We're, we're trying to do this the right way, a lot of time to. Think that's the right number to go and see what they say.
I would also like to, in our conversation with them, understand better. I keep calling it staging. That, that may be there, but, but if you got six seventy-five, can we do? Fifty and then another fifty. And, and I need to know a little bit more about how that, how they envision that process. They've the ones who brought it up to us twice now. And so they, they clearly have in their minds some way that this works. And it'd be nice because I think if, if you, if you could do this, a hundred acres at a time per se. That again reduces risk. If, if that's as I think I understand it. And so, uh, that, that may argue in favor of starting big and paring down as well.
Do you mean like have them take to auction a hundred acres at a time or we as a purchaser develop it?
I don't know what state. State land was the, when we met with them down in Phoenix about a year and a half ago with the commissioner. They raised this issue that it could be, you know, staged in, in parts. They didn't define it. I didn't think what the right question was at the time. But they've mentioned that again, most, uh, again recently. So I think we need to put some meat on the bones and say, what does that look like? We can prepare it all and then you auction it in sections or do we pair it all and then we develop it in sections? I don't know.
Clarity on that.
On that, yeah. I'd like, I'd like to have clarity on that. Um, how we can pare that down. We know the answer, I believe. Um, that we can purchase and then raise it or. Purchase the five seventy, six seventy-five and lower it. But I, I'd like to ask that question again. And then I would like to know about the hydrologist. So. My thoughts are, um, we've been in this. New year for thirty days, thirty-five days. I don't think it will be the end of the world. Um, Ron and David are very committed to this. Purchase of land. I don't think it would be the end of the world to go another two weeks to get those answers. And potentially have some other answers about partners. And not. Put that two thousand dollars in today. But I think, I know the level of commitment that David and Ron are at.
I totally agree.
But I, I, I still think we're thirty-five to forty days into our. I guess you could call it a session, correct? With all of us together. I don't think any of us in this, um, on this supervisor. Board are gonna disagree with one another in that fashion that we're early into it. Um, you know, I say if we set a goal, maybe end of February, perhaps, beginning of March to jump into this. I would feel much more comfortable if we had those full answers. Going into that, I, I don't know if it's possible to get those answers by then, Reed. Or not. But it would certainly help me with settling and answering to the constituents that I answered. Um, to be able to provide those answers. I, I think it would help David with his closure also. Um, Ron's not here. I can't. Um, speak for Ron either, but perhaps Ron could give us some of his thoughts. Speak for Ron either, but perhaps Ron could give us some of his thoughts of perhaps putting this off one to two meetings. Because we've come a long way today, very much further than I thought we would. But I think our answers have begat more questions than, or more vital questions than what we've had answered today.
Well, my approach has been that once we had this discussion, that's why, you know, I, I asked Eric that I didn't want to let this thing drag on. You put it on the agenda and I agree with you totally. Because my approach is that I want to go back and visit state land in person. And have these conversations, take these maps and everything because something that I learned from state land, from the individual that we've been working with. That he likes our approach. He likes that we know what it is that we want and, and the questions that we have and everything. Because a lot of folks that apply for state land, they just submitted application and don't know what the heck they're doing and what they're planning to do and so on and so forth. And I think there was a big benefit with us sitting down at the table today and having this discussion. And I'd like to go and pay a visit to them. Once you meet with the hydrologist. Once we meet with some other folks that are kind of in the picture as partners. And then, I mean, if this thing goes on for another month, month and a half, so be it. But we're going to have all the answers that. We want in order to make this decision of whether we go for it all or we cut it down.
And in fairness to Reed and Derek, they would be better prepared. The state would be more apt to go with what we want to go with if we have the answers.
Yeah. And, and I would just like to, sorry, I'd just like to echo that I, I, I agree with that approach. I think, I think we have come a long way. We've come a long way even in this work session and we've, we've garnered more questions. And we've gotten a lot of answers, but we've gotten garnered a lot more questions as we got information. I just think that it would behoove us to, to have those, those maps out, you know, that showed the 115 acres. And then also the six, 75 and maybe having that conversation with state lands to say, all right, well, you know. This is our huge dream. This is our, you know, the first decade dream. You know, what would they suggest that we ask for? And maybe they'll give us a good answer.
Let, let me, to set expectations, we're not going to have all of the answers we want by tomorrow or not. But we should be able to put more meat on the bones. I think that's.
There's going to come a point where we have to make a decision. I don't think we're ever going to get all of our.
We're not. And that decision we made on the best information available we have. The other is that, so we don't just throw the noodle against the fridge and see if it sticks. Like Supervisor Gomez says, we're not going to throw up a, a, a ill-prepared, trashy application. We're going to do it right and, and we're going to do it with as much information as we can. So that's not going to take place this afternoon. We've spoken about it metaphorically, but my instructions to our engineer would be, put the best application we can together. It would be helpful to have a few more data points that we can. But when we ask, we want it to look like we've thought about it. And, and, and we have those meetings and I'll work this afternoon to try and get something set up as quickly as we can. So that we can have those conversations. But, but when we start. Let's, let's look like the, the coaches say, like, like this is in our personal.
And to Reed's, to Reed's credit, I think we do have a lot of information.
We did.
And.
We really.
That was very good.
Come a long way.
Yep.
And there's been a lot of work put into this and we're not discounting that.
Eric, not to steal Chairman Gomez's thunder, but Bruce, I need email back.
Perfect.
So that's, that's even better.
A physical in-person meeting? Okay. Good. That'll help too. So big, big days tomorrow and, and Friday.
Okay. So I like to make a motion.
Well, we're not, we're not out of work session.
We're not out of work session.
I'll eventually.
Yeah, I'm gonna guess you're going to motion the table, but once we get out of work.
Table is not the word, right? Okay. So we all agree that we're coming out of work session. Yes, no more questions, concerns?
Nope.
All right. So we are leaving work session and going into our next item of business, number 13. Discussion and action. Consideration to formally begin the process of purchasing state land near the Y. Between Loma Linda and Verdi Lee near Skyline Road. Exact dimensions and locations to be determined by the board.
Mr. Chairman, you know, reading this, reading the language of this, I mean, I, I. I, yeah, we don't have the exact dimensions and locations, but I do feel that we have a consensus of. Of approval to, you know, consider, you know, to formally begin the process. And, and we could define the exact dimensions and locations later. So. Maybe a question for Derek. Could we make that motion and follow it up with the exact dimensions and locations after those discussions?
Of course. And that agenda item was worded specifically so that I did not tell you, you must vote on this or that. This, this again is, is the board's policy decision, but you could instruct staff to begin the process of applying. And that the board will, will define the dimensions at a future date.
Well, good then. I'm going to, I'm going to move that we formally begin the process of purchasing state land near the Y. Which is spelled either the letter Y, either Y or W H Y, but I don't know why the W E or Y E. But anyway, state land near the Y between Loma Linda and Verdi Lee near Skyline Road. With the exact dimensions and locations to be determined by the board at a future date.
I second that motion.
Motion has, demand has been made and second, is there any? Any other discussion before I entertain for vote? Okay. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. I just have it. So. Thank you.
Thank you for your patience, board.
This meeting is adjourned.
Thank you all. Before they close this out, thank you all. Take care.
Have a good one, Ron.
You too. Bye bye.